This conference will now be recorded.
Roy, do you know if you've had a notification from other P and Z members that would not be in attendance?
Just Mr. White, sir.
Just Mr. White. I see Mr. Solomon's here and Mr. Hagler's here. I'm looking at names.
What about Richard?
I'm looking for Richard Brown. I don't see him.
Four are needed for a quorum, correct?
That is correct. Mr. Monahan, I don't see Mr. Well, there's Mr. Monahan right now.
Well, hi, Tom.
I'm calling Richard at this moment.
There he is. Last but not least.
Less is more. I'll wait another minute to see if Mr. Brown joins us.
Yes, sir, and the city attorney is here, obviously, but she hasn't all gone yet.
I saw her a minute ago.
Yeah, she came up for a second and then disappeared.
I see her now. She's there.
I'm here.
I get confused with the big crowd.
You want to come listen to this, honey? You need to be in here. Hey, everybody. All right, ladies and gentlemen, citizens of Lago Vista. I mean, it's going to have to do some background noise there. Sounds fine now. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission of Lago Vista, Texas, Thursday, December 10th, 2020. We have a video conference and to begin our meeting at seven o'clock, like to verify some of our members. We have Larry Hagler, Charlie Solomon, and Tom Monahan, and myself, Garrett Zeleski. We also have our city attorney and our director of development, Roy Jambor. And I don't see our member, Mr. Brown, and we never want to forget our council, city council liaison, Dave Williams. I hear that he's on the mend and healing up. Good to hear it, David. In accordance with the Meetings Act, the commission is prohibited from acting, discussing other than factual responses to specific questions. And this is where we would ask for citizen comments on non-related agenda items. And I'm going to just mention before an individual may choose to speak at this time that we will have a number of people probably wanting to speak at this particular meeting. And I'd just like to remind everyone that if someone has already mentioned a particular item and have been specific, that we don't want to be redundant. And so if someone has already spoken on that particular subject and made the same point, would appreciate it that we would move along. Mr. Roberts, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. Kind of piggybacking on what you just said about the amount of feedback this evening. In light of that, there's a lot of many citizens. Oftentimes, when that's the case, these meetings typically go until midnight. And as a courtesy to the many citizens in attendance, would it be possible to hear items number three and five on the agenda at the beginning of the evening so that citizens can go back to their families early tonight?
Well, I apologize. I'm going to, because I didn't catch one word of that, I'm going to mute myself for just a moment and have to excuse myself for just a second. Evidently, the headphones that I have are malfunctioned, and I'm going to have to get another set. So please bear with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Terribly sorry about that. They've worked fine before. Mr. Roberts, would you mind repeating what I've missed?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again for recognizing me. Further to your point that you opened with, that there are, you expect many citizens to be speaking tonight on agenda items. Oftentimes, meetings with this level of attendance and interest in the agenda items will go until midnight and even later. And I was just wondering if, as a courtesy to the citizens in attendance, would it be possible to hear agenda items number three and five first this evening so that the many citizens in attendance can go back to their respective families sooner?
I appreciate that, and we may want to consider that. However, since item number one on the agenda is a continuation of last month, I would not want to move that out of place.
Any consideration to that request will be appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any other citizen comments at this time for non-related items? All right, then. That's the case, then. We will move on to item number one. Item number one is 20-1684-SP-E, consideration of a special exception, I'm sorry, a special application pursuant to section 1160 of Lago Vista, Chapter 14, to allow an increase in maximum height allowed by Table 8, Chapter 14, from 15 feet to 25 feet for a single-family residence at 20311 Continental Drive, Highland Lakes Estate, Section 17, and that's Lot 17009. And I guess we, this is a continuation of the public hearing. But Roy, I would appreciate it if you would maybe update a bit since there has been a considerable amount of input from the builder as well as other members of the of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes, sir. Just once again, in the interest of time, what has transpired since you heard this application last month? It was actually the property owner that submitted some photographs and some narratives that he thought made his case, if you will, that there was no significant adverse impact by the view, and asked that we include that in the packet. And hopefully, everybody saw that. Those are the photographs with a narrative that goes with explaining what's in each photograph.
Thank you, Roy. I assume that members of the commission did have an opportunity to review what was submitted. I know that we've spent a considerable amount of time at that location. I guess what I would like to do at this point is to continue the public hearing, unless the applicant has anything to present prior to continuing the public hearing.
A quick comment. Richard, he's trying to get in, but he said he's having some technical difficulties.
Oh, okay.
This is Dustin Marks, and I'm the owner of Marks Builders, and I'm representing Marty Lard Barbera, the client and property owner. I think that Roy pretty well summed it up as to what we submitted in the research that we did to show the impact of the view. Mr. Chairman, to honor your request, I will hold my additional comments. I think the photos and the comments speak for themselves and hope to move this along quickly. So no further comments from me at this time.
All right, and with that, we can continue the public hearing. And are there members of the public that would want to make comments at this time other than what was made during the previous hearing?
This is Howard Hoover.
I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
This is Howard. It looks to me like you have three oppositions for this for this thing. One of them is that it will block their views. Considering that the city has made an effort to make sure that people's views are not blocked by variances especially, I would say that you have to consider you have to consider this. The other thing is, is that there is a evidence showing that a variance would not adversely affect other interests. This is why it is important to hear from any neighboring property owners. That's all I have.
Could whoever was speaking, can you hear me? Whoever was.
Yes, I can hear you. I was speaking. Howard Hoover.
Okay, and would you, Howard Hoover, and would you give for the record your address, please?
Sure, it's 8910 Lago Vista, Texas, 78645-4143.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, other public comments at this time regarding this item?
This is Don Caffey. I am at 2700 Conestoga Cove in Lago Vista, 78645. I wanted to point out that, you know, I haven't been able to review any of the documentation or artifacts that you're talking about as far as pictures, research, otherwise. But the point that I want to make is that I can tell you with certainty that none of those pictures were taken from the main floor of my home, which is directly behind the property in question. And without being able to submit that evidence, I think that the pictures taken are likely irrelevant and very biased to the homeowner and the builder. So with that said, I'd like to reiterate that the only person who benefits from a height variance at that particular property is the homeowner and the rest of the community, which is directly behind it and going to have to look at it every day, is adamantly against it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Other.
This is Dustin Marks with Marks Builders again. Could you tell me what gentleman was just speaking? What was your name?
My name is Don Caffey.
Don.
And then, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to address his concerns now, or would I have an opportunity later?
Well, I don't know if there was a question directly to you, but if you would like to speak, go right ahead during the public hearing.
So in response to Don's comments, the photos that were taken and submitted, they can be found, and Don was asking about them, that he hadn't seen them yet. So they're on page 14 of the meeting agenda, and it's labeled as photo number five. And from the point at which the ridge pole could possibly be the most obstructive to view on Conestoga Drive, the ridge pole is well below the tree line, as shown in photo number five. We, you know, of course, would be happy to look at the ridge pole from his point of view, from the backyard as well. However, from every angle that we have viewed at the ridge pole from Conestoga, the ridge pole is well below the tree line and certainly not a significant adverse impact to the view of the lake or the hill country by any stretch.
So Mark, did you take any pictures from my porch from the main story of my home? It's an upside-down home, so the main floor is on the upper level?
No, sir, but the higher the elevation, the less the impact of the view. As the ridge pole would be further down into the tree line, the higher of the elevation that you are.
I'd be happy to invite anyone on this call and prove you wrong. Because the pole is only visible above the actual height of the ordinance. So anything above that is actually visible. I can see it clear as day right off my porch any day of the week. I can see it clearly right now. And if it was built to accordance to this, you know, provision, then I wouldn't see it at all. So your point is absolutely moot. It's not true.
Yes, however, you could see every other roof line on that street as well. And ours mentioned.
And they're all built in accordance, they're all built in accordance to the.
If I could, please, you're going to, I know it's difficult because of this, you know, the connection we have here, but please try to speak one at a time and not try to interrupt.
Sorry about that, Mark. Go ahead.
Don, are you finished?
Yes, sir. Please continue. Sorry about that.
Our roof line will be visible from your property. I understand that. However, from every angle that we were able to view from Conestoga, the roof line, as shown by the ridge pole, will be below the tree line. And as I mentioned, it would be very difficult to say that that roof line would be significantly adverse on the impact of your view or any other view on Conestoga. And the higher elevation that you are, second story, third story on that street, the less the impact of the view there is, as the angle that you are viewing the top of the roof is even further down the tree line from that angle.
All right. Thank you. Are there other individuals wanting to make a comment that beyond beyond what's already been spoken? I see Councilman Willie.
I just want to make a note that Richard Brown joined us at 7:12.
Oh, very good.
Okay, okay.
This is Robert Foskett. I live at 2738 Cody Avenue, Lago Vista, Texas, 78645. And the top of the pole blocks my complete view on that side of my house to the tree lines and everything else. So I disagree with Mark as far as his assessment because my house actually sits a little bit lower than Don's house. So that's going to completely block any view that I have, and the house is going to be built directly right across from me. And in the last meeting, he pointed out that all the existing neighbors around there, that they actually came and talked to them. No one came and talked to me. So I'm adamantly against it. And like what was brought up at the last meeting is allowing any of these as far as raised means that everybody else is going to go, well, you passed this one. That was brought up at the last meeting. Well, you passed this one. And to be honest with you, we all pay a lot of taxes, and I've been paying taxes for over 20 years here. And originally, when I bought the house, the highest house would have been Harold's house as far as blocking my views, is what I was told at the time. Now, I know the law has changed as far as, you know, the height requirements. So they're already getting an extra six feet of height, let alone adding in another 10, which means technically that house is going to be 16 foot taller than all the rest of the homes. And it's not going to look right either, in my personal opinion, in the neighborhood.
Mr. Foskett, what was your address again, please?
2738 Cody Avenue, Lago Vista, Texas, 78645. My house is the one that takes up the corner at Cody and Continental, right directly across from where this is going to be built. And I mean directly across.
I guess I have a question if I'm referring to the correct property. What windows are view along Continental Avenue?
I have an upper deck that's viewable, that's on, that can view up that side of the house.
You have an upper deck?
Yes, sir. And basically, that house at that height will completely block whatever view I have.
Okay.
You know, if there's a question about that, we can pull up Google Maps. You're able to display things and share the screen. You could pull up Google Maps, go to photo view, and anyone who's talking here, you guys, we can all put that on the screen. Google Maps plus Google Earth would give anyone a view. So what they're saying, you know, you can understand the veracity of what they're saying and also understand, like, their point of view about how the impact is. It's pretty obvious to see. So if there's a question about that, guys, two seconds, pulls up Google Earth, pulls up the address, pulls up the area around it, even show you lots if you want.
And I'd also like to point out that it was not made aware to us. Normally, these meetings would be in person, and we could bring a packet in with our own pictures and the own, you know, what's going to happen as far as impacting us, as far as our views and whatnot. And it wasn't made aware in any of the documentation or the previous meeting that there's any way to share because it was actually said in the meeting, as far as sharing our screens, I could have had pictures downloaded showing the impact of what was going to happen to my views, along with Don could have done it and the other neighbors that go up the cove. I personally walked up the cove, and that's going to blow a lot of people's views that go down into the cove. Mine is hill country views, and I'm going to lose. So I don't think it's fair that they got to turn in additional pictures where we didn't. Because their picture is going to be biased, obviously, because they want the extra 10 feet. And we don't. And we, you know, we're here first. Thank you.
Any other individuals wanting to make comments during the public hearing? All right, then. If that's the case, we're going to close the public hearing at 7:22.
If I may address Robert's concerns, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
This is Dustin with Marks Builders requesting to address Robert's concerns, if I may.
Well, I just closed the public hearing.
Okay, please disregard.
I'd like to open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners and anyone at this point. Any discussion amongst the commissioners? Tom?
Um, I'm trying to pull up Google Maps to reconfirm what I've already seen out there on two separate visits because currently I still don't see where there's a significant impact of views as defined in our ordinance. So, but I am trying to take a look at that, just to be certain. But to be honest, I drove around, walked, and from my viewpoint at least, I didn't see whether there'd be any significant impact on the views myself.
I, you know, and I made my third visit out there, Tom. And I understand that, you know, we're talking about somewhere around a five or six-foot difference from what the existing homes on either side would be, if that's correct, Roy. The design of the house is such that there's a lot of open space on either the left or the right of what's being proposed. And quite honestly, I have to have to agree based on the number of visits I've made out there with Tom. I'm sorry, what? I'm not sure who was trying, Larry?
Yes. I noticed one out there that probably makes this a bigger problem. But if you go to 20310 and stand anywhere on that property looking towards the southwest, that house was totally blocked. There is nothing on either side because of the high ceiling runs front to back. And I think the big difference is the houses on either side all have flat roofs. I'm sure there's reasons why they wanted that high pitched roof. HVAC, I don't know. There'd be a lot of different reasons, but that is probably a big part of that impact.
Uh, thank you, Larry. And the other commissioners have, uh, any discussion? Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Go ahead, Tom.
I was just gonna say, I pulled up, I pulled up, I think it's Mr. Foskett's house there. And I still don't see the deck he's referencing from the street view anyway. There's nothing above on the roof that I see as a deck. So I guess I'm having a hard time with the argument.
The, you know, and I went and looked again. I guess it was the side of that particular house that, uh, I don't see where there's, and that's written in the, uh, uh, in our, in our documents about, uh, uh, no real view of that house that is on that corner of Cody and Continental.
Actually, this is Robert Foskett and the deck is on the second floor on the back and the side of the house. So it's not in the front of the house on that Google view thing that you're looking at. It's not on the front. It's basically on the back and the side. And there's actually openings on that deck that look out directly over where that house is gonna be built that I see from the second floor.
I'm looking at the corner of Cody and, uh, Continental there and I don't, it's not apparent to me.
You're more than welcome to stop by and I can show you what I'm talking about.
Did you say that that, uh, deck is on the south end of your house?
I believe it would be considered south and west. So like I said, it's on the, 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 the side of the house that's facing out towards the lake and actually goes across the whole back and you can see out both sides. So I can actually from the deck see out to the lake, to the left and to the right. And that house is gonna block what view I have to the right when I walk out from the second floor onto the deck. And that deck is the one I hang out at the most. The first level deck, you can't see anything but trees that'll go around my property. So I usually hang out on the second deck.
Yeah, there's a lot of trees and what I can see from our packet that.
Well, I like looking at the trees. So I like trees.
Yes, we do. Uh, would appear that the the deck that, that I'm, I'm looking at, uh, is more, I guess, parallel with the house that's, uh, to the left of the subject property. But anyway, um, Mr. Brown, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Um, I'm, uh, I'm having trouble, uh, finding the view corridor issues that these, uh, commenters have, have raised, uh, and I'm, I, I've been to this site, uh, three times. And, uh, I have tried to, uh, look at it. I've walked up, uh, the cul-de-sac, um, off of Cody. What, I've forgotten what the name of that little cove is. But I, I walked up that and, uh, and up and down Continental. And, uh, I, I am, uh, I'm inclined to, uh, favor this, this application based on my own observations.
Is there, uh, any further discussion on the part of the commissioners? All right. Would anyone like to make a, uh?
I'll give it a shot.
All right.
So for item number two zero dash one six eight four dash S P dash E, I, uh, I propose the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the height exception requested.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Uh, seconded by, uh, Richard Brown? Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, Larry? Uh, uh, Larry, your microphone is not. Uh, it's, there's so many small pictures. I, it's hard to see. Larry votes aye and Charlie? Uh, Charlie?
Charles?
Nay.
Nick?
Charlie's declined. Okay. And To-, uh, Tom and Gary votes in favor?
I oppose it.
Correct, correct.
I'm opposed.
Thank, thank you, Charles. And Gary is in favor. That's, uh, uh, three, two.
Wait, wait a minute. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't think you counted everyone.
I counted Richard, Tom, Larry and Gary voting aye. I got Charles as voting no. But.
I thought you said three, so that's why I.
No, four. I lost count because we forgot you showed up.
Well, I had.
That's okay.
Apologize.
All right. All right, moving on to, uh, I, I guess I would like to, uh, possibly go back and, uh, maybe try to honor, uh, what was brought up uh, as far as the, uh, excuse me, I gotta take a quick drink here. What, what's the final vote on this? Uh, four to three, uh, four to one.
And to be clear, four to one approving the change, correct?
That is correct.
Mr., Mr. Chair, it looks like you might have lost Mr. Solomon for a second. Not.
Okay, um, let me get, try to get back on here.
Try and watch for him if he comes back.
I will. I know he was having difficulties. Um, what, once again, uh, we had a recommendation from, uh, one of our citizens to, uh, maybe change the order a bit. And, uh, just to verify, I did want to get through item one since it had been, uh, tabled from the last month. And, uh, what wa-, was it proposed that, uh, we move to item three? Is that correct?
Um, I would suggest the, the two items on the agenda tonight, which have elicited the public attendance such as it is, um, I'm scrolling back up, but I believe it's items three and five, Buffalo Trail and Nature's Point.
Okay.
Nature's Point probably answers the most people here for obvious reasons. It is a relatively significant impact.
Actually, Paul, I think it's, it's pretty equal. Uh, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, number three.
Excuse me? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we skipping my agen-, my article here on two for the Country Club Drive Lots? Is that what we're doing?
I, I, we have not done that yet. And, uh, I believe that, uh, based on, uh, the overall interest on that particular item, I don't know if that's going to take quite as much time. So, uh, since item, uh, three, uh, would follow, I think we'll just go ahead and, uh, we're gonna do item number two on the agenda.
Thank you.
And, uh, let me, uh, let me go ahead and move forward on that item. And, uh, we'll see if we can get to, uh, three as recommended. Uh, it's fairly soon. Uh, item two, uh, two zero dash one seven two four dash S P dash E, consideration of a special exception application pursuant to section one one point six oh of chapter fourteen, allow an increase in the maximum height by table A of chapter fourteen from eighteen to twenty-three point one feet for single family residents at one, at five one zero five and five two oh three Country Club Drive, Country Club Estates, section two, lots two seven one and two seven two. And, uh, Roy, if you would, please, uh.
Yes, sir. And, and with apologies for the brevity, but, uh, uh, trying to avoid a long night, uh, quite frankly, the only views for, uh, that this property will impact are those from the and from those on the other side of that fairway.
Uh, understood. Appreciate it. Um, making sure I'm on track here. Would the applicant, uh, like to make a presentation?
I don't really know what I'm supposed to do to make a presentation. I know that it doesn't block any views.
All right, all right. Uh, if that's the case, then, uh, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing at seven thirty-eight. And are there, uh, public comments regarding item number two? No public comments? So then, uh, we're gonna close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine.
Hello, can you hear me?
I'm not sure what that was.
There's a couple of callers with their mics on, but I don't know if they're the ones trying to say something.
Yeah.
Caller two and three.
You know, I di-, maybe I moved. I didn't hear anything during the opening of the public hearing for item number two. Is there anybody to make that comment? Okay, then we're gonna close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine. Like to open it up for discussion amongst the, uh, commissioners? Any, uh, uh, we'll start with Tom.
Yeah, I, I don't see any problems with this property at all. Um, very nice location. Uh, looking from the golf course, as one who frequents the golf course, I can verify there's a big oak tree between the fourteenth green and the house. And you can see the ridge pole. I also worked this afternoon. I went on, uh, Arrowhead Drive. There was a couple of comments there, uh, towers between the green and the fifteen feet. And I could not tree also blocks any view from those houses. And I could not see the ridge pole from those houses. So I don't, uh, I don't see any problem with this particular property.
I'm not, uh, gonna have to ask people if they would please mute, uh, if they could. Um, Richard, Richard, I know you wanted to speak. Before we do that, either, either Roy or Aaron, perhaps you could try to get hold of Mr. Solomon? And if he's gonna rejoin us?
Well, I will give him a call, sir.
Uh, thank you. Uh, uh, Richard, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with Tom that, uh, I find, uh, no view impacts, uh, on the, on the neighbors and, uh, I, I don't see any problem with this application.
Thank you. Uh, Larry, uh, did you, did you wanna make any comment at this point? All right. Thank you, Eric. Okay, well, perhaps as we move on to some other items, uh, I would, uh, there's no further discussion like to, uh, regarding item two zero one seven two four dash S P dash E to grant the special exception, uh, application pursuant to section one one six zero, chapter fourteen, to allow an increase in the maximum height allowed by table A of chapter fourteen from eighteen feet to twenty-three point one feet for the single family residents to be located at five one zero five and five two zero three Country Club Drive, uh, section two, lots two seventy-one and two seventy-two. Is there a second to that motion? Uh, seconded by Larry Hagler and, uh.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Solomon's back.
Oh, okay. Uh, I don't see him there, but.
He's at the very bottom of my screen. I'm not sure where he shows up on yours.
I don't see him myself.
Or do I? Uh, it's, uh, moved and, uh, seconded. Is there any further discussion on item number two?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to get, oh, there's Charles on my screen now. He just, uh, came into view.
No, no, just, just the icon.
Yeah.
Dark screen.
Uh-huh. But I think that's Charles. So, uh, I, uh, I withdraw my comment.
Thank you.
Now that, uh, Mr. Solomon has, uh, been able to join us, rejoin us.
All right, uh, any further discussion on that item? If there's, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further, uh, and, uh, Mr. Hagler, your vote? Vote aye. Mr. Solomon? Well, he might not have been there. Let's see how we, how this goes. Uh, one hand?
Aye, approved.
And Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Okay. And Chair votes aye. So that's, uh, would certainly, uh, uh, make the vote carry. And, uh, uh, Counselor, uh, Aaron, what, what would we do? Is just show it as, uh, Mr. Solomon was not able to participate or couldn't vote?
If he wa-, did, is he choosing not to vote?
I, I, I ca-, I can't hear him if he's there.
I think he may be having technical difficulties still.
Mr. Solomon, do you wanna try to just call in?
That's not him saying.
If you guys wanna vote, he can probably hear. Someone get on a cell phone with him. Cell phone minutes are nothing. And keep him on the side and allow him to vote. And then put your, put your phone up to the speaker on your thing and he'll get through. It's old school, but it works. Had to do it in Dubai a couple of times because of the middle, in the Middle East. Pragmatic military solution.
I, I do not have, uh, Mr. Solomon's phone number.
Well, I, I did and I called him and his wife answered it and she says he's in the meeting. And she says he's in the meeting.
As well.
Mr. Solomon, you're, you're, you're you're muted, sir. Can you, do you have the ability to unmute or call? Roy?
Mr. Sullivan, the mute button is at the bottom where it says M I C. You push it green and you can talk.
Mr. Solomon's had issues in the past with this. Ms. Silveira, we have had four out of five votes.
Yeah, we reflect, we can reflect one that he was not available at the time. You have a quorum, and if you have all four ayes, your, your motion would pass, sir.
Okay, the motion is passed then.
I, I will call and advise his wife to suggest he call in.
All right. Thank you, Roy. In the meantime, we'll go ahead and begin with item number three.
Might I ask, might I ask? It's an unanimous vote already, and even if he voted no, it's a done deal.
So I can assume at this point that it's been approved.
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you all very much for all your work.
And thank you for your patience. All right. Move on to item number three. Item number three, two zero dash one seven two five dash S P dash E. The consideration of special exception application pursuant to section 1160 of chapter 14 to allow an increase in the maximum height by table A of chapter 14 from 15 feet to 21.8 feet for a single-family residence at 8610 Buffalo Trail Barque Ranches, Platte 12, Lot 1203. And Roy, if you would grace us with the staff report?
Well, I, I will try and summarize it as best we can. The planning commission has certainly been in this situation before. And it's one we do our best to avoid. Nonetheless, you guys have a job in front of you. And it, tonight's form doesn't have anything to do with punishing contractors or, or anything of that nature. And that's not to say that it's not necessary. And certainly ever since I've been here, it's a discussion we've been having with the, the Building and Standards Commission about how to get more compliant behavior on, on the part of our contractors as a whole. But today, the issue in front of you is the same height issue that it was on the other two cases. Pure and simple is, is best you can. And we certainly understand that it puts you in an awkward situation. And we, we certainly sympathize with it.
I guess just to reiterate and back to the commissioners, what we're dealing with is, once again, height. And to try to remove ourselves from any of the other emotions involved in this particular case. We have had the situation before where builders or owners have gone and completed their project disregarding or being unaware, whatever the reason was. And the structure was already completed. And quite honestly, in my opinion, we're about to the point here in Lago Vista with all the development that's taking place that this whole idea of just maybe not take getting permission and then after the fact trying to seek approval is starting to wear a bit thin. So with, with that said, I guess I would like to go ahead and allow the applicant to go ahead and make their presentation.
Hello. I made a statement, public speaking is not a strength of mine. So I made a statement and I'm going to read it to the, the council members. Council members, thank you for your time. My wife and I are here tonight to ask for a special exception to the height ordinance of 15 feet. It was never our intention to need a special exception. We decided to build a nice home and become friendly neighbors and absolutely did not want to build a home that upset anyone. According to our original plans and height surveys approved by the city, we could have been able to build our exact home within the ordinance. We were unaware of a potential violation until October 20th, when the home was near completion. On that day, I happened to be at the property when a city official came by to take measure. He notified me that a couple of our neighbors had reached out to the city with numerous complaints about our builder, including that of our home. I was completely thrown off guard, but as soon as I became aware of a problem, I did everything that was asked of me by the city. As a result, we have a new topo survey done to try to find the discrepancies. Our understanding is the first mistake was a two to three foot overage on our foundation. Although our plans called for the slab to be two to three feet lower, we passed all inspections and received all permits to continue construction. The second oversight was that the height ordinance states that homes must not be no more than 15 feet above the highest natural point of lot. We also learned that this means the high point cannot be disturbed in any way. However, when excavation and landscaping, the dirt on our high point was disturbed. This caused the requirement to be the highest, the next highest point on our lot, which was significantly lower than the highest point on our original topo survey that was submitted and approved by the city. On October 20th, we were unaware of an infraction. Unfortunately, there are no ordinances in place to protect the property owner. If a builder is not responsive to communication, it would have been nice and beneficial to us as landowners to receive some form of notice that we were in, that there were any violations in question. How can we be held responsible for our builder's mistakes when we don't know anything about them? Perhaps moving forward, all communication should be sent to builders and property owners. We are deeply sorry that we have been here, that we are, that we have to be here tonight and wish that the circumstances were different. This situation has caused my family extreme stress and anguish since October 20th. We were scheduled to move out of our formal home, former home, and into this one October 26th and have been living in the Lago Vista POA campground ever since due to this case. We are desperate for your support tonight. If we do not get approval, we will not be allowed to move into our home despite having passed our final inspection. I have dedicated my whole life to be able to have this home. Restructuring this home is not an option as it would have to be completely torn down in order to lower the roof line and the whole second floor. Not to mention another year of construction. We simply can't afford that. The home will be foreclosed on and will remain empty at the height it is now. The current value of our house will bring up the property and home values around it. But having a vacant home sitting unoccupied and possibly and un, unoccupied, unmaintained and possibly demolished will no doubt drag those values down drastically. Please take into consideration that our home is less than a foot taller than our immediate neighbor to the north. The height of our home does not have a significant adverse impact on anybody's view, nor does it have a significant adverse impact to the architectural structures of the neighborhood. As you already know, seeing our roof from a hill is not the same as blocking an entire view. And the architecture of our home is contemporary and similar in style to those around us. It is critical for you to understand that the neighbors are using their opposition to this variance as a platform to seek consequences for our builder. We agree that builders should be held accountable for their mistakes. This situation makes it clear that there is need for reform, but that should not be done at my expense. So let's implement a protocol that catches mistakes in early building stages or add clearly defined fee structures when certain ordinances are violated. This should be done separately from an issuance of a CO. Your denial tonight does not punish the builder at all, but will have a much more extreme impact on my family, the neighbors and the city. A nonapproval tonight means that the city will continue to grant variances throughout neighborhoods, including this one. And the builder will move on to his next project. But the greatest suffering denial will be for my family as well as the neighbors and the community. Your denial means that I will not be able to obtain a certificate of occupancy and will be allowed to move in, not be allowed to move in. In this scenario, the house will definitely remain a condemned, unoccupied, unmaintained home at the same height it is now, which we will be, which will be devastatingal to everyone involved except the builder. I know that our neighbors mean well and want policy change and consequences, but your denial on my home is not the best avenue for this. So I'm here begging you for your support. That's all we have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think what I'll do at this point, some of the commissioners may have questions of the applicant.
Yes, sir.
And so I just, you know, a bit out of order. But since fresh in our mind that the applicant's made his presentation, is there any of the commission members? I'm, I'm sorry. Is there any of the commission members that wanted to ask questions of the applicant at this time? Okay. Then we will move on then. Mr. Brown, are you trying to speak?
I, I, I would like to address
You wanted to ask questions of the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Did you say that even after the home was framed, you were unaware that there was an issue regarding the height of the house?
Yes, sir. I, I did not know there was a, a problem with the height of the house on October 20th. Is the first communication I was given that the height of the house was too tall.
And
we were supposed to move in on October 26th was our plan. The six days prior to move in, the driveways poured, the whole house is finished, basically, is when I found out.
And, and that was from someone from the city?
Yes, sir. That was somebody that came out to measure the property. I, I guess the city owns some of their own equipment and they were coming out to shoot the lot based on complaints they had from neighbors.
It was not formal communication. He just happened to be at the property. Had he not been there, we don't know when we would have learned.
To this point today, we still have nothing from the city ever emailed to us as owners saying there was ever a problem with this lot, with this build.
And is it also true that at this time you've never heard from your builder that there was a problem?
No, up to this point, we had no idea there was a problem.
Thank you.
Raymond, just for clarification, the Development Services Department dispatched the Public Works crews because the builder was ignoring our request for documentation and had for quite some time. And they weren't much help either, but they tried.
Right, so what, once we found out, we started moving quickly based on everything the city asked for. We were completely unaware, our builder did not give us any knowledge of this, or we would have had it taken care of then.
Any other commissioners have any questions of the applicant? All right, if that's not the case, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at eight o'clock. And I'd like to, I would like to just go ahead and remind those individuals that would like to speak once again. If it becomes redundant that your comments have already been addressed or your concerns have been addressed, that you go ahead and move on. But if you have something to add, that would be appreciated. I see that, I see someone with their hand and up in the screen and I will go ahead and recognize if you would give your name and address to, for the record.
For the record, my name is Sarah Arias and I'm a resident at 21502 Bullet Cove. And my significant other also owns the home and owns a lot next door, which is 21500 Bullet Cove, Lago Vista, Texas, 78645. I don't want to sound redundant, but I do want to ask if our letter that was entered into the packet was read by the committee members? And if not, I would like to move forward and read it because contrary to what Mr. Brenton has said, our issue is not with his builder and that is not what we are trying to take care of here. We are trying to take care of the fact that the house was built almost seven feet too high. And we addressed it back in May to the city, as Mr. Janboor said. And Mr. Christian is very well aware of the city ordinances and everything that goes on as he's a subcontractor and has worked with the builder in the past on homes in, on our block. So to say that this wasn't even neglect or an oversight rather willful and wanton because he, even after all of those inspector, or the building officials coming forward, he continued to have construction done on the house even to this point. There was multiple different occurrences throughout the building process where they weren't acts of good faith as far as the builder trying to hide the elevation point when it was, or after the inspector had came through for the, for him to send these unaware people to come at the current time. I would also just like to point out that 10 of the submissions that were entered, only two should be taken into account that are in favor. The rest of them are in opposition and one of the three that said were in favor for, I believe, mailing ID six. They are in the Texas Builders. Sorry, it's in my letter, but they're part of the Texas, Texas Builders. So they would have a vested interest in this. They are not looking out for the best, they're not looking out for the best interest of the homeowners and other residents that currently live on this lot. And they also work with the builder of Mr. Christian. As it is in my letter, there are multiple reasons this would not cause any undue hardship as, like I said, it was known and they continued, continued to do the work regardless. I don't know if missed, I requested for Mr. Roy Janboor to read my letter. If not, like I said, I can go ahead and read it if it's necessary.
Roy, that, that's included in the packet, is it not?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought, yeah. Yeah, I think have the commissioners had an opportunity to read that letter?
Well, and everything that I've gotten for the last week, you guys have been, gotten it direct by email as well.
That, that's correct.
The attorney's letter as well.
Okay, then I appreciate everyone reading it and looking at it because that's the main argument behind all of this. It's not about the builder whatsoever. It's about the height of this home and it adversely affects both of our properties, one that we do plan on building on, and it would affect the views of that property as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other during the public hearing? Is there another individual that'd like to speak?
Hey Gary, this is Howard Hoover. Right above you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Would you please remind people who speak about this issue in the public comment section that the issue before the commission is the impact on view only?
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Brown, for reinforcing that. That's great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gary, this is Howard Hoover. I'm, I'm located right above you on the screen.
It's a new screen you're looking at?
Okay, this is, this Howard Hoover. I'm at, uh, 8910 Barque Ranch Road, Lago Vista, Texas, 78645. The question that I have, and it's not rhetorical, is how does the city allow a house to be built almost seven feet too tall, okay? And not know it until it's after it's built? The other thing is, according to I under, to my thing here, hardship considerations, in order to justify a zoning variance, a hardship must not be self-imposed, okay? Well, if they knew about this beforehand, then it was definitely self-imposed, nor financial only, and must relate to the very property for which the variance is sought. So I don't see how.
Mr. Chairman.
In good, in good, in good faith, what?
People.
Wait a minute, I'm not finished.
Only. I'm not interested in his opinion about the relationship between the builder and, uh, the city, only the impact on views. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have a thing? It's, it's in order to, this is, this is the law. In order to justify a zoning variance, a hardship must not be self-imposed nor financial only and must relate to the very property for which the variance is being.
Mr. Hoover, that, that's, we're, we're not dealing with that at all. We're dealing with an application for a height variance. Has nothing to do with hardship.
Application for a height.
Height exception. That's different from a variance. We're not dealing with variance rules here. A variance seeks relief from a rule that when, where there's no rule that offers relief for that particular rule. But here we have an exception where there's a specific ordinance that lays out of, uh, a process for seeking, uh, an, an exception. And, and so it's not a variance, and the variance provisions do not apply in this case.
Is, is that correct, uh, Aaron?
That, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. There, uh, there's a vast difference between your consideration of the special exception um, and a variance. A variance would have to go in court of adjustment. Um, and your consideration of a special exception does not have to be a variance.
I'm not sure what that is, but I'd appreciate it if somebody would mute whatever they're doing there.
Dude, if you're not talking, then this works way better.
Uh, was that, uh, was Ms. Silvera clear to the commissioners, uh, what she had just mentioned to, uh, go further on what, uh, Mr. Monahan had, had referred to? All right.
I'm sure it's clear to the commissioners. It doesn't seem to be clear to many of the other people present tonight.
Understood. All right, uh, so the, a public hearing is still open. Are there other individuals that wanted to speak? Uh, that, uh, I, to refer to an item or to, uh, add on to, uh, something that has not already been discussed?
I would like to speak.
I see, uh, the name is, uh, uh, as I see that, would you, uh, is it Karen? Karen, would you give your name and address and?
Uh, yes. My name is Karen Kern. We just bought a house, uh, we just bought a lot up the hill to build on. The lot is near airports and Warbonnet. If you're familiar with that. I am familiar with this particular house. I actually bought a house up the hill. We had full intentions on building our final home there regarding this situation. I believe that the city operated in good faith and that the builder operated in good faith, and certainly the homeowners operated in good faith. I don't believe that any of these entities was trying to circumvent city ordinances, and unfortunately, this mistake was not caught in time. And not to mention the fact that this large, beautiful home will increase the revenues to the city and bring up the value of the homes in this neighborhood. I would recommend that the variance be approved. And that's all I have to say.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Crom. Uh, was there someone else that, uh, I, I see someone with their hand raised? I'm not sure who that is.
Yes, hello, if you can hear me, my name is Olivia Hill, and I live at 8611 Buffalo Trail. My husband and I own, um, both this lot and the lot directly next to it at 8609. Um, so we're directly across from the house in question. And, um, first and foremost, um, I, I do want to say that while Matt Ridgway did build our house, this, this has nothing to do with, you know, issues that may have occurred during our build process. And our letter, um, outlined our concerns around this more broadly, um, for protection for the community. Um, our house was built four years ago. We came to Lago Vista, um, for the very specific reason of the beauty of the area. We were sold very explicitly by Matt on the ordinances that protect the views. He cited them to us many times when we selected our lots and ultimately designed our home. So there, there is no possible way. He was not aware of what was happening. He chose not to do anything about it and to proceed with this build. And my concern about the decision from the committee, um, while I may have sympathy for the, the homeowners, there, there's a broader community issue here to be had. Um, if the community rules in favor, um, and grants this exception, then that will pave the way for Matt, who clearly has, as I've heard tonight, responded to absolutely zero inquiries from the city, who clearly knew he was violating the regulations and did it anyway. It will pave the way for people like him and others to continue to do that if they feel like all they have to do is beg for forgiveness or say they didn't know after the fact. And that has negative consequences on the community. So I feel that this issue, while yes, there is one particular homeowner involved, it's about the broader group of us who live here and future residents who want to build here. Um, it mean, it's worth noting that Matt actually owns a lot behind our secondary lot and could easily do the same thing there. So not only is the view from the front of our home now obstructed, we now have to risk the, the, the view from behind our home being obstructed. And I, and I want to acknowledge that when we moved here, we absolutely understand there would be development. Um, we appreciate that. We welcome new neighbors and, you know, we want the area to grow and thrive because that is good for all of us. But there is a responsibility of the city and the home, and the builders and the homeowners, because we all sign forms, we build here saying we understand the rules to make sure that those rules are complied with. And so there was clearly enough blame to go around, but I do not feel that those of us who already live here, who are going to suffer the consequences, um, deserve to bear the brunt of that. So I, I really implore the committee to think about the long-term consequences of this decision. And to your point, Mr. Zalewski, it's, it, there has to be less emotion about the immediate issue at hand and more about what this means to our community in Lago Vista. So I appreciate the time. I know this is a difficult position for any committee to be in. Um, and I, I don't envy you that, but I hope that our comments and our submitted letters, um, were helpful.
Uh, Ms. Gill, if I could, please, you kept referring to someone by the name of Matt. Who is Matt?
Matt Ridgway. Matt Ridgway built our home. He built the home at 8610, um, with his son Braxton Ridgway under the guise of True Homes, or that's their new company name. He actually built our home under North Shore, a former business of his.
And unfortunately, from, I can re, maybe get Roy or uh, possibly Aaron, um, Mr. Ridgway really isn't involved. It's the, now, now it's the owners of the home and not Mr. Ridgway. And I guess I hear or have read where people are trying to punish Mr. Ridgway, but he's, he's not even involved in this at all. Isn't that correct, uh, Aaron or Roy?
Well, uh, he is the agent of the property owner by virtue of the fact that he's the one that signed the permit, but he signed it on behalf of the property owner, who's ultimately the responsible party.
So, uh, would sound like the, uh, remedy, should, should this not be uh, approved, the remedy is the, uh, homeowner to, uh, I guess, uh, make remedy with the builder?
I don't know if that was directed to me. Um, I would assume so. Um, you know, as my earlier comments mentioned, this really isn't about Matt. I referred to him only to emphasize the point that it, it's just not reasonable that the, the parties involved, including the homeowner, were unaware of the violation of the restrictions. Um, I, I, I understand that that's, that's difficult to, to hear and say, I'm sure, um, they're wanting to move into their home, and I get that, but there's just no possible way that, that's, that that's accurate.
Thank you. All right, we'll be.
I have a question. So I, there are building inspections by the city about a number of things.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, who's, who's speaking?
Paul Screusaker. Uh, it's just a simple matter of, a simple matter of a question. Since we're all looking at circular blame or who's to blame or who's not, obviously, the builder is responsible for building, is usually bonded for such. And, uh, if he violates the code, it's impossible for most, uh, homeowners and, and who contract to understand all the complexities of the bill. Uh, it, it would be unfair to think that. Uh, that is why the builders, you know, go through and why cities inspect. So I will still come to a, a very interesting point. Uh, does a city inspect at time of framing and inspect that the height codes are built? If not, I would respectfully submit to you that you should change that immediately, and this will never happen again, but certainly, uh, at time of framing, this could have been found. And I, I don't hear anyone telling me at time of framing that anybody in the city came out and said, hey.
All right. Well, we, we appreciate your comment. And with that, uh, question, I guess we can refer back to, uh, uh, maybe to get clarification from, uh, but my understanding is that it's the responsibility of that builder when they reach a particular point in construction that they notify the city and the inspection needs to take place before, uh, they move on.
Yeah, that's correct. May I speak, Mr. Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I was trying to get an answer from Mr. Jambores.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. The way this works, there are certain required inspections required in our ordinance. And the contractor, when he's ready for those inspections, calls us out. Uh, depending on when it is, we will dispatch someone that works for the city or a contract inspector that we use. In this case, the framing inspection was done by a contracting inspector. It did in fact pass. Uh, there is nothing in our ordinance that specifies that, uh, anything about the height is part of that inspection and never has been. Uh, I, quite frankly, is, is frequently as this has been a problem recently as opposed to historically, uh, that's certainly something that I think the building and standards commission needs to look into. But it is not a required part of that inspection right now.
Well, I wouldn't look too long. You're about, this is probably about the cost several hundred thousand dollars worth of damages all the way around. City will get drawn into it or, or all this. I'm, I'm just stating some facts. I'm watching Mr. Brenton raise his head because Mr. Brenton is going to go to a lawyer and get any kind of relief he can at any place he can do it if you guys make this vote. I'm merely stating the obvious, innocent, not liking to see our taxpayers' money just wasted, nor this sort of thing keep on going. You, there are very, very strict height restrictions at framing. It better be, better be understood. And here's the thing, if it hasn't been, great. It's a problem. All things, you know, when we get, go and get a warrior wounded, look at what happened to him. We try not to make that mistake again. I would suggest we, we do this as the military would.
Mr. Chairman.
I, I, I guess, I guess just to reiterate, you know, on the, uh, application for, uh, true homes, on the jurisdiction notes, you know, it states that be sure you understand the dark skies rule before, uh, uh, buying outdoor lighting. You must build to the 2015 codes and all city of Lago Vista local codes. It's ultimately the responsibility of the owner to comply with all codes and ordinances. Be sure your subs are aware. Any cut or a lot must be sloped or, uh, retaining wall built. Driveways must not be over 15% grade landscaping. But I guess the whole point is that, uh, must comply with all codes and ordinances.
So, so, um, real quick on this, uh, on this matter, um, we found out through another builder that I worked for, um, after having to try to become experts on high points of lots and ridge heights. Um, it's very ironic that Greg DeLong, uh, who works for the city, sent an email on October 20th stating that all homes from that point forward built in Lago Vista had to have a certified company establish the high point on the lot. And I don't want that to be forgotten. The high point on our lot was fine. Our house was approved by the city. What happened is we moved our high point. The high point was disturbed to create a raised flower bed, and the city came by and said we could not do that. That's why the high point was disturbed. If not, we wouldn't probably even be in this meeting. And I want to make that, that, that if that would have happened by the city, we would not be sitting here at this point. It would have been caught early on in the process. And I don't know how as homeowners were responsible if nobody ever from the city ever sent us an email stating that we were not compliant. If my builder's not responsive, shouldn't I be added to an email? It's not very difficult. And then we could have handled it. That's all I want to say about that.
Thank you. I, I see that, uh, there's a couple of different people moving their hands around. Uh, I, I guess if you, either you speak, I can identify you or you could speak and, uh.
Wayne Woodall.
Okay, Wayne Woodall, and you give your address, please?
Thank you. Uh, sorry, I missed part of the conversation. My computer decided to go south, but I've rebooted and everything's fine now. I hope you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Um, I'm a neighbor down the street from, um, the house that the Christians have built. And I've been, uh, really assessing the, uh, the impact of what's happening here. And, uh, in, in my own mind, being, uh, I'm, I'm a professional engineer and also a professional inspector with Texas Real Estate Commission. I know, I know the codes. And I would say probably if I'm going to put a percentage blame, it would be 75% blame would be on the city of Lago Vista because you guys need to totally revamp your inspection department. They are lazy. They don't know the codes. They don't know what's going on. Don't blame it on the fact that.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, Mr. Brown.
Please ask Mr. Woodall just the topic at hand.
I'm addressing the topic at hand, sir. Part of the topic at hand is, is why we're in the situation.
Pardon, Mr. Woodall.
I'm sorry?
I beg your pardon. We are only here to discuss the impact on views of the already constructed home, not how we got here. We're not, we're not here to discuss how we got here. We're not here to give legal advice to the Christians. We are not here to discuss, uh, policies of the development or inspection office. We are here tonight to discuss the impact on you. And that's all.
Well, the situation is, now, if you pass an ordinance, you need to enforce it. Why are we even doing this? Why are we even doing this? It doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Woodall.
I'll stand down.
Well, Mr. Woodall, just, just to address that, if I could, please. The problem is that the builder, the homeowners, did not address and make the application to go ahead and build prior to getting, uh, the, uh, height approved for that home.
I understand.
After the fact, and that's all we're here to deal with. Like Mr. Brown said, we're here to deal with impact on views, uh, and, uh, not to, uh, you know, litigate what's, you know, wrong with the, the city's inspection process and so on. So I, I appreciate that, and I'm sure that'll come up, uh, in the future, uh, with, in some other. So I appreciate that and I'm sure that'll come up in the future within some other department. And I know that Mr. Jamboor wants a lot of things corrected along with people, members of the city council. So are there other comments during this public hearing that someone would like to address that has not already been addressed and specific to the height restriction and to views? I see someone has their hand up. I'm not sure who that is. If you'll just go ahead and speak and give your name and address.
Hi, this is Jennifer Brown. I live at 8612 Buffalo Trail and Mr. Christian's house is directly adjacent to our house. I would just like to state for the record that we are opposed to allowing a special exception and to really reiterate what Brandi or Olivia mentioned earlier about the larger impacts to our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other individuals at this point during the public hearing? If that's the case, we're going to close this public hearing at 8:27 and move on with discussion amongst the commissioners. Mr. Monahan.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate all the motions involved in this case and, and, you know, there's sympathy to ground to everybody, go around for, for everybody. I think there's a lot of mistakes being made. But that being said, our job is to, as Richard has tried to emphasize, is just to look at what the impact of the house is on views. And so I'd like to speak to that specifically. And, you know, I was out there earlier this week and I looked around and my initial assessment was that I didn't think it impacted many of the commenters that thought it impacted the views. I didn't see the impact. Then when I went home, you know, we got some more comment letters and I looked at things. And then I went back up there again and I was particularly interested in the Ridgeway home that Sarah was, lives at. And that to me, that house, if any house has standing with respect to views, I think it's their house. And so my initial assessment was, well, that house is higher than this one, so there may not be an impact on views. So when I went back there a second time, I went, I at least walked up the driveway to get up the land view and from the ground level, there's absolutely no view because the house across the street blocks it. But then you got the second level with that big picture window. And I, you know, I've gone back and tried to assess that. And I've tried, I've gone to Google Earth, trying to see what the line vector is for the views. And the only thing I can come up with is I, I would like to recommend, and people may not like it, but I would like to recommend that we continue, well, that we continue the hearing, keep it open and continue the hearing into next month based on a request that we get pictures from Sarah's picture window to see exactly what she sees so we can make that assessment of what the impact is on views. Because I'm, I'm not sure from a ground view that, so I, I think we need to give her the benefit of the doubt and assess it from there. And it'd be nice to get pictures from her picture window. And if there's one even before the house was built, that would help too. And if others are agreeable with that, then anybody else that has pictures from their property to bolster their arguments, then that would be appreciative too because frankly, I don't see any impact of views to any other property because I think any blockage is by the fact that the house is there, period, not because of an additional seven feet. So if that is something we can get for the next meeting to, so we can make sure we're making the right decision, that's going to be my recommendation.
Other commissioners, any comments along that line with Tom? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I suffered with the same problem that Mr. Monahan did, that if you go up the hill to the vacant lot to the east, I guess, of the Ridgeway home, it's still difficult to fully assess the impact on their view. And as an alternate to his suggestion about photos, I would, I would just like permission if, maybe if someone from the Ridgeway home, Sarah or the owner, would give us a phone number through Mr. Jamboor's office so that one of us at a time could just come up and stand on the front porch. We could call when we can, can be there. We can't come as a group. That's, that's not allowed by our rules, but I, I would like to see that view. I would like to know what you're talking about it. And I cannot tell by standing in the vacant lot next to you. I can't get up as high and I can't get over there in, in that line of sight. I guess I would also make that same offer to anyone else who would like to have a commissioner come and look at their specific situation. We cannot just trespass and start walking on, in other people's property than those who are the applicant. And so we sometimes have, have not been able to get the full effect of neighbors' views, but I would all, I would offer that as an alternative to Mr. Monahan's suggestion, but I'll, I'll take either. Thank you.
Any comment, Mr. Hagler?
I concur with Richard. I think going back and looking with pictures would probably be very helpful. I'm in favor of keeping it open for another month.
Ms. Silvera, I wonder, since we have closed the public hearing, where would we go to if the commissioners agreed to bring this back during the January meeting? Procedurally, what would we do?
Well, I think that what you'd have, what you'd want to do is reopen it and leave it open. The seat, reopen it this evening, leave it open and continue that public hearing until the next meeting.
Like we did on item one last month?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to be able to do that?
It would be best for the record to have someone request to have the, the public hearing reopened.
Are we allowed to speak at this point?
Mr. Monahan?
I just want to get concurrence from Sarah if that's doable for her.
So currently Hassan and I are in Philadelphia. We won't be returning until January, at the earliest January 3rd. We'd be happy to show our view because like we've said in our letter, we lost the Colorado River View that we had before, and this also would affect the lot next door. So not only our second level view of our current home, but any potential building we decide to construct next door.
Our next meeting wouldn't be till January.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So it would be good to get photos that identify that you're looking at your picture window.
Yes, I've actually sent, I've sent it photos, I've sent photos to Mr. Jamboor of before the house was constructed and what was currently there and I believe in October, if not in June. And so we should, you guys should have references to those photos. If not, I can try to find some and send them to Mr. Jamboor. Or contrasting photo of before and after.
What I'll do, I'll, I'll look and see what I have, send them back to you and see if those are the ones you think they are.
I have a photo from Ms. Arias and Mr. Ridgway's living room as well.
Yes.
That would be good. That would be good. Yeah. This extends the heartache for everybody if we do this, but I think, want to make sure we're fair to everybody too.
So my question to you is because we don't have a place to live and it's very difficult to rent a place for a month, is there any way of getting a temporary certificate of occupancy so that I have a place to live until this decision's made?
That would not be.
We have to leave the campground Monday.
Unfortunately, this body could not do anything like that. I guess you would have to speak with Mr. Jamboor.
I would like to consult with both the building official and Ms. Silvera before making any commitment of any sort, but we can certainly discuss it.
Okay. And that can happen when, Monday?
Maybe even before then. We'll try it by email, but as soon as we can.
Okay. We just, we need somewhere to live and to have our family until this is decided.
So, Tom, are you going to make a motion?
Yes. Of course, I got to pull up the project number.
Seventeen twenty-five. Twenty, twenty seventeen twenty-five.
Okay, for item twenty seventeen twenty-five, that's it.
PE and all that. SP. I figured I'd spot you the hard part.
Well, I, I sort of got caught off guard here. I didn't have the packet pulled up.
Well, if you want to, I'll go ahead and do it, Tom. Just make a motion that on item number three, twenty dash one seven two five dash SP dash E, be reopened and continued in the January Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. How's that, Ms. Silvera?
Perfect, sir.
That's sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Segmented by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
For ayes is.
Aye.
Is Mr. Solomon still there?
Sir, yeah, he called me and he's, he can hear you. You couldn't hear him for some reason. I offered to take his vote over the telephone and he decided that was way too much trouble and would just listen.
All right. Well, we don't have any opposed, is that correct? So this will be continued at the January meeting and hope that the owners can work out something in the meantime and we can make this applicable and fair for all. We will move on now to, let's see. Let me just make sure I am where I am. I think just for the sake of all of us, we're going to just move on in the regular order of business with item number four, which is two zero dash one seven two six dash R dash REZ, consideration of a recommendation regarding a zoning district change request from R dash one D, single-family residential and TR dash one, temporarily restricted to P two Park and Greenbilly District Passive and C dash two, commercial large scale with design approval and property located at two zero seven zero zero Northland Drive, Lago Vista Estates, Section Six, Lot eighteen seventy-four. And the portion of the property planted is tract A separating, separating this lot from both seventy-six hundred and seventy-six oh eight Lowman Ford Road. And Roy, if you would take us through the presentation, please.
Yes, sir. Bear with me. This one's a little complicated and confusing. Several years ago, you, you had a piece of property that was in the C one district, which would allow a convenience store already, but the owners, in order to avoid the possibility of any future non-conformities, changed the zoning district to C two. That lot is there and has been there and, you know, subject to the various levels of approval, there could already be a convenience store there. However, the owners were trying to put a store that was a little bigger than the site can safely hold. The vehicles, those sort of things. We've all been at those kinds of sites before. Our ordinances now, particularly your new design review ordinance, gives you the discretion to require something a little better. It transpired that in order to build the size of store and the, you know, the size of fuel canopy that they wanted, the only way to safely do that was to acquire a little bit more property, which they did. They required more than they needed, but it was the only way to get what they needed. They required, they acquired a strip of land that was owned by the city that has a waterline in it that they will, at their expense relocate. They also bought a residential lot. Now, most of the residential lot, for the most part, will remain open space, but in order to protect the residents and the residential area behind it, the Development Services staff recommended that they seek zoning for that piece of property as P two passive park so that you could prevent any structures on it whatsoever, other than picnic tables and that sort of thing. So other than the landscaping and open space and the detention pond that will be necessary, that will be all that's on it. But because this includes new zoning, your current design review ordinance requires that the design approval happen at the same time as the zoning approval. For the portion of the lot that was already C two, that is a separate act, you know, for design approval. But as you can tell, in the former C two property, it's mainly just the gas, the fuel tank canopy and, and parking and paving. So what we presented to you was the whole package so that you can see something that makes sense to you and you can follow what's going on. Now, as you may notice from the packet, there are some deficiencies in the design portion. The detention pond requires some landscaping that's not indicated. We don't know if there are any protected trees on the site. We don't have that documentation, so we can't fully evaluate whether the landscaping ordinance meets the requirements. But the one that, that kind of caught our attention that we suspect they'll agree to has to do with the finished materials on the sides and the rear of the property. Even though House Bill twenty-one thirty-nine, I believe it is, prevents us from specifying materials, the criteria in your design ordinance says if those elements are foreign to a residential neighborhood, that they're required to shield them with landscaping. So we would ask you to either ask them to specify a material that's equivalent to what's on the front of the building or that's appropriate for that, or to provide the landscaping required by the design review ordinance. or to provide the landscaping required by the design review ordinance.
All right, thank you, thank you, Roy.
I'm sorry, gave you a headache hearing it.
Oh, no, no, no. These are the things I live for, Roy. I'd like to go ahead and ask the applicant to go ahead and make their presentation first.
Can I ask Roy a question first?
Yes, Tom.
Roy, I know that parcel they bought, the zoning request is for P two. I looked at the P two requirements and, you know, it's pretty strict on, you know, the no structures except for three items. I think there was a
Right.
That are listed there. But if they're gonna have, if that, is the retention pond gonna be on that parcel at all? Or is it gonna be on what they bought from?
Yes, no, that will be what's there. That will be the water feature on that property.
So my question is for that retention pond, it probably have some burn around it? And would there be an expectation to fence it in? So, you know, if kids or anything doesn't get in, would there be any desire to have that on that thing?
Yes, sir. All that's required. In fact, I may have mentioned it. I didn't highlight it very significantly, but yes. There the, depending on the design of the pond, there may be safety rails incorporated. Typically what you have and I'm not, you know, without having seen the design, it's kind of hard for me to imagine, but you know, the new convenience store at Boggy at Lowman Ford, you guys saw that little concrete wall there? It's about to have ivy growing all over it. You know, that's the sort of, that's the sort of thing that we require. You know, it's gotta be an attractive thing and, you know, it doesn't necessarily cost a fortune, but we don't have a lot of design detail on this pond yet. But we do have a very stringent landscaping requirement for detention ponds involving the aesthetics. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but I mean, I guess, you know, I guess if we're to approve this, you know, at the end of your summary, option B would be the one I probably be most in favor of. But does that, I'm trying to call it now, does that mention anything about a fence? Just so we have an, I mean, a fence would be considered a structure, right?
Yes, sir. And it's a required part of a different section, you know, that, but it wouldn't necessarily be a fence. It might be a safety rail. You follow me? It might be ornamental. It may have landscaping on it. They have the opportunity to submit designs for that that are compliant with our ordinances. And we certainly would have preferred seeing them already. That was our preference as well.
And I guess mine was more of a technical, being technically compliant with the ordinance, do we need a specific line item in the recommendation that we'll, even though P two only allows these three structures, but we will make a special allowance for a fence or a rail or whatever? I mean, that's a structure, isn't it?
It's a, it's a structure that is typically somewhat ignored for, you know, compared to that, but I'm with you. I would, I would be more comfortable not just with the rail, the entirety of the landscaping and all those things that are required that they really hadn't gotten to yet. And I think it's because they haven't sized the thing yet. You follow me? That's, they're a little bit behind on that than where we'd like them to be.
Okay.
They will know more about it when they know exactly how deep it is and the slope of the walls and all those things. And that's when we'll talk about how to make sure it's safe and not attractive nuisance. But to answer your question, we do anticipate some kind of guard rail, but, you know, you can do the same thing with landscaping. You know, there are things you can do and we haven't seen what they propose yet, but we haven't, we also haven't seen the design of the pond.
Okay.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you, Tom. I'd like to move on with the, the, if you don't mind, Mr. Brown, I'd like to, because we can come back to this, but I'd like to let the applicant make their presentation and we can go from there, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Greg Billings. I represent the developers of this project. Are you able to hear me at this point?
Just fine.
Okay, very well. Basically, what we were trying to do here is, is take the rear lot, which was lot eighteen seventy-four, and use about half of it as C two zoning. And then the remaining half, based upon what Mr. Jambore just said, have that be open space, green space, with the exception of the detention pond. If you were to look at Google Maps, the, the the property line along Northland Drive is just fully engrossed with native cedar. And there's a substantial natural screening of vegetation there that would prevent a lot of, lot of view intrusion into the property from neighboring lots or the neighboring street. And so we felt like the, the parkland zoning back in there would be something that would, that would be offer a buffer that would be sensible and practical and applicable in this situation as opposed to having it remain as a residential lot. The, the property won't truly be able to be developed as parkland other than that detention pond. And I think that you'll find that the natural vegetation is gonna provide a, a buffer and then I don't think that a railing around the detention pond is gonna be be very, very viewable from the street. But, but it might be something in the neighborhood of a wrought iron fencing or something of that nature, whatever would be necessary to, to protect anybody from falling in the depth of that detention pond. As Mr. Jambore pointed out, a lot of the lighting and the canopy for the gasoline pumps and all that stuff is gonna be further up on the, the commercial zone, existing commercial zone lot, fronting Lowman Ford Road. And therefore, we think light intrusion into the neighboring residential area and you know, the view of, of the side of the building from, from Northland Drive is gonna be obscured.
Thank you, Mr. Billings.
Yes, sir.
I know that Mr. Brown, did you want to make some comment now? I know you were.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, the only thing that I was going to add was it seems to me that you often see detention ponds that just have sloped sides rather than vertical sides and then don't require a rail. But I would like to say now to Mr. Billings that I feel as though the utilization of the native cedar as a landscape buffer for the neighborhood is not a good idea, given that you have an obligation to raise the canopy of all of those trees to, I can't remember if it's five or six feet, but in any case, yes, you do have that obligation. And I really feel as though some, some other plan will be necessary in order to appropriately screen the back of that building from the neighborhood and parts of Northland Drive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I would say that if any recommended privacy fencing or fencing of some sort, that would be acceptable, would be, would be looked on with favor by my clients. And I don't know what other, other types of screening would be preferable to the city, but screening, fencing, et cetera. We're very open to whatever we would need to do to make, make this project unoffensive to the community.
Right. And slightly better finishes on the rear and the sides of the building will minimize the desire for additional landscaping. They kind of go together, you know.
Did any of the other commissioners have any questions of the applicant or of the staff at this point? Okay, if, if, if that's the case, what I would like to do, and I'm sure I'll be corrected if it's not appropriate, but I would like to make a motion to defer the application without continuing the public hearing in order to give the applicant the opportunity to address the deficient design review related elements and ordinance requirements prior to forwarding a recommendation to the city council. Anyone like to second my motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. Are you going to have public comments before you make this motion or are you just?
I think the zoning part needs to have a public hearing. Is that not correct, Erin?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, I was just going by some of our potential alternatives and to deferring the application without the public hearing. But if we need the public hearing, we'll do that and I'll make my motion later. So if that's the case, go ahead and open the public hearing at eight fifty-seven.
And that's my fault, Mr. Chairman, because you could do that, but only for the design review component, not for the zoning.
So, so it, Roy, are you saying it can't be deferred? I mean, we'll continually.
The, the part about the, the part that you could defer without a public, a further public hearing had to do with the design review for the existing C two lot. You follow me? The rezoning, you have to have a public hearing on.
I understand that. I reopen the public hearing at eight fifty-eight. I guess my question is, after the public hearing, keep the public hearing open and then go ahead and resume and possibly make that motion?
That's up to you. You do not have to keep it open once you've had it. Correct, Erin?
Correct, Ms. Silbera?
That's right.
So, so we can open the public hearing and close the public hearing and then make the motion?
That's right.
Very good. All right. So the public hearing was opened at eight fifty-eight. Anyone would like to make comments at this time regarding this item?
Yes, I would actually. Two, I have two comments to make. The first one, I went to ask Roy, who made the comment about the structures of the building for the convenience store slash gas station will minimize the landscaping changes. What exactly is he alluding to in that? Is he saying that the structures of the building will make it so that we don't have to put a a fencing, a privacy fencing or a wire fencing? What did he mean by that comment?
If you would please, we didn't get your name and address, if we could please.
Absolutely. It's Jennifer. And I'm calling, I'm on behalf of my mom, Karen Todd, who lives at two zero seven zero two Northland Drive, who lives at the lot adjacent to the proposed rezoning lot. I submitted an email earlier today and I got a reply from Roy saying that it was going to be included to the packet. I was sending the impression that that would be read out loud at the meeting for the instructions. When you go on the website, it says if you submit comments to this email at least an hour prior to the meeting, it will be read aloud at the meeting.
Yeah, I apologize. We didn't, I don't remember seeing that you wanted it read aloud at the meeting. I added it to the package.
Okay, I didn't know I had to clarify that because when you went online and you read the instructions for the meeting, it said if you submit it an hour prior to the meeting, it will be read out loud at the meeting.
Right, if required, yes, ma'am. I apologize. Yeah, and normally we, we get all these written comments well in advance. They never stopped for this meeting. They continued right up until the time of the meeting, actually.
Great. Can you read it out loud, please?
Let me get it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you remember which one it was?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thanks.
Would you like me to do so, Mr. Chairman?
It's being requested. Go right ahead if you would, Roy.
Sir, Planning and Zoning Commission Committee members, I am submitting these comments on behalf of my mother, Karen Todd, who resides at two oh seven zero two Northland Drive, Lago Vista, which is the lot directly adjacent to the proposed rezoning area. My mother received notice of the proposed rezoning from residential to high impact commercial. This looks like plans for a convenience store gas station. This neighborhood is zoned for residences and the impact of a late night noise, traffic and light pollution that is inevitable if a gas station is built will be disrupted and is a secondary residential. Building a gas station in a residential neighborhood directly impacts the homes that are across from and adjacent to the lot. It will reduce the property value of these homes. This is also alarming for the following reasons. A, potential fuel spills and runoffs. My mom's property is located directly downhill from the proposed rezoning area. Each time that it rains, runoff from the parking lot will run directly into her organic garden, polluting it. It will also impact other residents whose homes are downhill from the gas station. Contamination of green space. B, a designated green space is located directly behind my mom's house. Potential fuel spills may contaminate the green space. C, health concerns. My mom plans to retire soon and will be spending her time at her home and outside working in her garden. She has suffered from severe pneumonia and lung-related ailments. I'm deeply concerned about the noxious gas fumes from the gas station will affect her health. D, property value decreasing. This is my mom's first home and she has worked hard all of her life saving for it. She and her family have spent the last eight months working outside on her property to improve the appearance and the value of the property. If a gas station is built on the property next to hers, it will impact the value of her investment. I am appealing to the Planning and Zoning Commission to reject the proposal to change the rezoning on this lot from residential to a high-impact commercial area. My mom moved from Austin to enjoy the peace and quiet of the Lago Vista Lake countryside. A gas station built directly next to my mom's house will ruin this. A gas station will cause traffic, noise, pollution. It will change the tone of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others during the public hearing?
I would like to speak. Can you hear me?
We certainly can.
Okay, my name's Karen Todd. That was my daughter that just spoke. She mentioned a lot of the things I was going to say, so I'll just reduce that to just a few extra comments. I'll have to make a left onto Northland to get up to Lowman Ford to go to work. And the gas station's gonna be right around the bend from my property. Making a left is gonna be much more hazardous. Coming onto the property, coming onto Northland Drive from Lowman, I read that there's gonna be extended lanes. So there'll be a right-hand lane going into the gas station, a straight-ahead lane and the lane coming back out from Northland. I think that that's gonna create a lot of traffic issues right there because when you make a right-hand turn, you've got to immediately get over into the middle lane because you're not gonna be going into the gas station lane. And there's not a lot of room there to maneuver between Lowman Ford and Northland. I'm also very concerned about possible runoff, gas lane leakage, and of course, the oil and gasoline spills on the pavement. I get tremendous water runoff down onto my property from that property. And it has created like a natural path, looks like a walkway. It's all water runoff. I'm very concerned about that. I'm very concerned about that.
Well, we appreciate that. It was very well-covered, a very well-written letter. We certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
My last thing is, the retention pond is going to be on the property right next to my property. I'm concerned about the trash and the kind of water that's going to be in there because it's a, it's a, it won't be clean water. And I'm concerned about mosquitoes. It's going to be right next to my property. I don't know what kind of buffer between my property line and the structure of the retention pond. I don't know how long, how big it'll be. My understanding is not going to be very big, which means my, it'd be difficult to enjoy that part of my property because we get enough mosquitoes there in the summertime without a huge retention pond with water just sitting there and there's no cover.
Thank you.
The retention pond is for stormwater, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
I was asking, I think the purpose of the retention pond is to capture stormwater because of the concrete of the pad, so we want, I don't think it would be full of water all the time.
Is there going to be any kind of, will there be any kind of cover on it?
Nope.
No.
Still have mosquitoes. Doesn't matter how much water is sitting there.
And that's where the contaminants end up by design.
I, I understand how it works, but I don't want to live next to a retention pond or a gas station.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate being able to speak. Thank you.
Any other individuals during the open public hearing would like to speak?
Yes, my name is Karen Egger, and I own a piece of property at 20707 Northland. And I think this is spot zoning, and I never saw anybody have this on the 2030 plan. Was this on the 2030 plan to incorporate a residential lot into a commercial lot? Yes, I'm asking a question. Was this on the 2030 plan as far as incorporating a residential lot and making it into a gas station and going C2? It doesn't seem like that was on your 2030 plan, and this just seems like spot zoning where you're just letting somebody come in and put a gas station next to homes?
If you'd like me to answer, Mr. Chairman, you're going to have to tell me.
Oh, please, please, Roy, if you would. Sorry.
No problem. The gas station was a use-by-right on the property before these gentlemen bought it. You know, all they, all they're doing basically is, you know, making the property where the gas station will go a little deeper. The future land use map is not parcel-based in that specific. So the answer is, is I'm not aware of anything, you know, you know, incompatible. I mean, it certainly shows all of Lowman Ford Road to be commercial, and that's what this is.
It shows it to be C1, and you guys have already made the 7600 Lowman Ford into C2. Now you're taking a residential lot and turning it into mostly C2 because it shows the entire building is going to be on the residential lot.
Ma'am, that nomenclature doesn't appear on the future land use map. That's, that's a zoning map you're referring to.
Well, it's your planning map for 2030. But anyway, I don't feel that we need one more gas station. You have three gas stations and convenience stores within a mile. The sales tax from the products that would be sold would have been sold at either the other three convenience store, gas stations, grocery store, CVS, and many other locations to eat within a mile radius. And there is absolutely, on the tax records, the 20700 Northland does no longer exist. It has already been put together with the C2 lot at 7600. As far as Travis County shows, that's what it shows. It's one great big lot instead of two separate lots. So they, I think they've already done it.
No, ma'am, that's, that's the appraisal district taking the convenient route of combining the tax accounts. It's still, still separate lots, two separate lots in a, in a tract.
Okay. And the traffic is going to be a big issue going on there because you are going to have, it's already almost impossible to pull out left onto Lowman's Ford. I, you've got the exit on Lowman's Ford has an acceleration lane, which means you have to get over to turn right onto Northland. You've got a turn lane. People that are coming north on Lowman's have to turn onto Northland because you have no other avenue for them to get into that station. They have, they're going north on Lowman's. They have to turn left onto Northland, then turn right into that gas station, and that's going to just make it impossible. And plus, dangerous for people out on, on Lowman's Ford.
I appreciate your comments. I think that's been pretty well-covered by the others already. Is there other individuals that would like to make a comment during the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would. This is Paul Roberts, but I did see Commissioner Brown raise his hand, and since he's the commissioner, I believe deference should be given to him.
Well, this is the public hearing, and since this is the public hearing and not for the, the commissioner...
Public now.
But since, since you are a part of the public, Mr. Roberts, we'll certainly give you the floor, and I'll be waiting with bated breath for Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. And Richard can wait for M&amp;Ms. I've got a question. Richard, the M&amp;M reference was to something at a last meeting. I just want to get clarification from Roy on the future land use map. The, the gentlelady was bringing up a question referencing the 2030 plan. What is the future, how does the future land use map have this parcel of property currently Or what is it saying wants the zoning to be?
Mr. Jambore, would you like to address that?
I directed that question to you, sir.
Yes, sir. It's, it's regional retail heavy. It, it doesn't make, doesn't use zoning classifications on the future land use map. It describes them instead.
So to, just to confirm my understanding, you're saying that there would be no deviation from the future land use map in approving...
Right. And, and you may see there's, when you look at the future land use map, you'll see retail and commercial all up and down Lowman Ford, incredible depths, the, the likes of which we are discussing now with some consultants over some unrelated work about whether that's realistic or not. It's so deep. But, you know, the, the idea is, is as long as this is frontage, you know, it is consistent with the future land use map. But at the same time, and this is why we wrote the design review ordinance well after that, that master plan was done, was to protect from the kind of insensitive encroachment into the neighborhoods and make sure that it was done as, as best as it can be and exercise the degree of discretion that we're asking you to exercise.
Thank you for clarifying that. I, I was thinking back to about three or four meetings ago to what was effectively spot zoning on Don Drive, and it was zoned residential, but the lots behind it, I believe, were zoned commercial. And I sensed trepidation on this commission to approve it, though it did in the end vote in the affirmative to approve, approve the zoning change from residential to commercial, even though they were residential properties all up and down that street consistent with the future land use map. But I understand you to say that this is currently, this zoning change would be consistent with the future land use map. So you answered my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Brown, would you like to jump in at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to mention to, I believe it was Ms. Egger who raised the issue about traffic, that the commission might very well request a traffic impact analysis for this project because there is that issue. But I know, I don't know that the commission will do that. I'm just saying that could become a stipulation of any approval that might...
For clarification, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind?
Go ahead, Mr. Jambore.
The traffic impact analysis has, in fact, already been done. And in fact, the traffic improvements that you see on your site plan are the ones that are required by the traffic impact analysis to mitigate against the impact of this facility.
Thank you, Mr. Jambore.
And, and I'm sorry I said that, but I, I didn't want the, this thing could have gone on for another two pages. I mentioned it very briefly in one point. But where you'll find it is when I talk about the site plan not being as generous as it looks like, because those turn lanes required by the TIA will also require us to take some right-of-way on Lowman Ford to make up for it. But that, that's where you, that's where you'll find that little hidden secret that it's already been done.
I'm sorry, can I say something? Or, I'm sorry.
Oh, you certainly may.
Okay, so has this already been approved? I was under the impression this was just the beginning steps, like the first steps of it. This was the rezoning commission. I'm not familiar with how it is in Lago Vista versus Austin, but does it go to the city council after this, or are you guys the final say?
Roy, do you want to clarify, or do you want me to?
The rezoning goes to city council.
Oh, it does.
The fact that we've been working on this and the TIA has to do with them being able to understand what the requirements are before they go this far.
Okay, so I see. So if you guys vote yes for it, it has to go to the city council. Is that correct?
They, they, it, regardless of what their recommendation is, it goes to the city council.
Okay.
The only part that doesn't go to city council, although technically they'll see it as well, you know, part of this property is already in the city.
I'm sorry. What was that?
It wasn't me. I don't know who said anything.
Okay, sorry.
Right.
Has that been clarified?
Right. Yeah, I mean, they have the right to build a gas station here, okay? Already on the portion that's in the C2 property. If there were no rezoning in front of you, there would still be a design review about that property and that gas station.
Got it. So how do you object to that exactly? I think Lago Vista is a bit different than Austin in terms of the steps you guys...
Ma'am, if I, if I, if I could, you could raise that objection at the city council meeting if this were to go to city council for the rezoning of the other property. But as, like, like it's already stated, the individual has the, the right to actually build that. It's the additional, I guess, to be clear, Roy, it's what's in addition to this to make this project actually work needs to be...
Right. This gentleman, with or without any other approvals, have the right to build some convenience store on the existing C2 property. The city council...
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, let, let, let Mr. Jambore finish, please.
Yes, ma'am. That was true before I ever got here, or before this property owner bought this piece of property. Now, what is new and fairly recent, as you guys will know, is the design review requirement on that property. Even that didn't exist previously.
Which, which is a good thing, which now, now we have an opportunity to really look at the actual design instead of somebody just, whatever they want to put in as far as a convenience store, gas station.
The other, the, the only other discretionary reviews that weren't really discretionary, discretionary had to do with engineering design of the property. You, you've got a little more in front of you now, and that by design for an existing piece of property would not go to the city council and is not a public hearing. If they were building a, a gas station that fit on this site, it would be no different than the new garage training that you did. The, recently, you had the Trailhead Club for the hollows. Those are simply discretionary design reviews you guys go through to make sure it meets those criteria. It, it, design review is not a way to say, no, you can't build your gas station if we, you know, that, that's not what that's allowed to do. That would be a takey.
Okay.
You're allowed to build it on the, on the residential lot that is at 20700.
Excuse me, who's speaking?
This is Randy Mattson. I live at 20703 Northland Drive. I am right across the street from where, where the potential rezoned property is located.
Okay, thank you. And did you have something to add, Mr. Mattson, beyond what has already been expressed to the commission?
No, you did see my comments, I think, in the documentation I had sent in earlier that had to do with the view of the, of the buildings and again, the, the traffic safety. I did not actually get a chance to look at the plans that were put forward until a couple of days after I submitted that information. So my biggest concerns, again, are still pretty much what I had stated, how it's going to actually look if it's approved, the property across the street from my home. And also, as been mentioned already, I hate to be too redundant, getting out on Lowman's from Northland Drive and making that left turn is hazardous, even with the added lanes. I can see that's going to help, but I hate to use the words, without a traffic light there, it's still going to be very difficult.
Right. Thank you very much.
And just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, the, the additional property that is in front of you and the city council and all that, that's not a foregone conclusion.
I'd like to speak, please.
Yes, and if you'd give your name and...
I'm Julia Anderson, and with my husband Floyd Anderson, and we live at 20801 Northland Drive. We've already brought up some of the concerns of the safety of Northland, but there's also a big problem coming off of Lowman onto Northland because of the narrow width of the street and the cars coming out of Phoenix. There's, number two, there's a stop sign at the corner of Northland and Oak Hill. Almost no one comes to a complete stop at this corner, so now this will be more of an issue of cars exiting out of this proposed commercial property onto residential property. The establishment of the Phoenix Automotive business, since it's been established there, we have had an extreme issue of traffic onto our neighborhood as well as speeding cars, which is a safety concern. Another concern is a major, a major concern is the building of this property. When the security bank and the grocery store and the other stores were built, this had an adverse effect on this neighborhood. Water was shut off without notice and was off for several hours. The, the security bank water runoff flooded down to the house on Northland Circle where water was coming into the house. The clear, the lots were clear-cut, leaving no vegetation at all, no barriers or trees or anything. When they were drilling on this property earlier this year, they hit and broke our water lines. They were with, we were without water for more than three hours. The city had to come in and fix their problem that they caused. Did they pay for the damages? Did they pay for the salaries of the employees that took our time and money away from the city? Another issue is there should be barriers so residential does not have to visually see any commercial property. The four-foot fence behind Phoenix Automotive shows everything. What about light pollution? The higher gray lights used for commercial are more than a normal neighborhood. Too much lighting of residents of, or suffer the glare and light portions pollution into their homes. What about noise pollution? There is already a concern of the amount of noise that comes from Phoenix and the shopping Toxic fumes from pumping gas and toxic fumes being released by the underground tanks... Toxic fumes from pumping gas and toxic fumes being released by the underground tanks that are being released into the air and the air we breathe. Idling engines, large diesel trucks emit a large quantity of particles into the local atmosphere. Fuel tanks, storage tanks, and gas pumps are a storage of, are a source of contamination due to spillage, leakage, and into the ground and the water. There are many residents who are at home during the day and many that are now working from home. This could have an adverse health impacts on residents, and many of the various contaminants could be cancer causing. There is a possibility, which has been brought up before, that this could reduce the value of our homes on Northland. So.
Thank you very much, Ms. Anderson. Thank you.
Can I not finish?
Uh.
I just have one more piece to say.
Okay, just finish one more piece, if you would, please.
The original zoning of both Phoenix's and his gas station lot were C1, low impact. When it was discovered that Phoenix really is C2, it got rezoned, which then allowed the gas station lot to be rezoned to C2. This is no longer impact, which low impact is office space, quieter buildings. On top of that, Phoenix has purchased the lot behind them, which is still rezoned, still zoned to residential, will probably be rezoned to commercial. So when does it stop when purchasing residential lots and changing them into commercial is allowed? The next guy could ask for the same. It starts to encroach on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there other individuals that were going to speak during the public hearing?
Yes, I have another question. Okay.
Again?
I was wondering if the council for the buyers could comment on potential.
I'm sorry, who's, who's speaking again? And last name, Jennifer?
Yes, I'm the daughter of Karen Todd, who lives at the lot adjacent.
You're Jennifer Todd?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. So I was wondering if council for the buyer, Frank Billings, could comment to how they prevent proposed, potential fuel spills, runoffs when it rains. My mom's property is directly to the left of it, directly adjacent, and it's downhill.
I think that's already been addressed.
I don't recall anyone speaking towards a solution to that.
Well, in, in terms of this, I, I don't, Mr. Billings, if, if you want to respond to that, I'm not sure if this is the forum to do that.
Why not? Again, the only thing I can state is that the corner lot, Lot 1873, is on C2, and formerly it was on C1, and, and, and even in C1, it could have had a gas station. And in C2, it can still have a gas station, which is a more, a long-term zoning that, that was recommended by staff because of the future land use map for the city of Lago Vista. So a gas station could have always been allowed on the corner lot, and the fuel tanks, the fuel pumps, the canopy, the lighting is all going to be on the commercial corner lot. And what, what we're trying to do is, is shift the building itself, just the building, onto a portion of the rear lot. And we did acquire a, an alley, an alley strip there from the city of Lago Vista, that was a 15-foot wide, wide alley that separated the commercial lot 1873 from the residential lot 1874. So we did acquire that land. And so what we're trying to do is just move the building to a portion of the back lot. So it, it would be a building and, and the gas station per se is going to be on the front lot. And the convenience store would be just like any, any other kind of a, a, a retail establishment.
Okay, so is that alley strip that you referred to, that green space behind 20702 Northland Drive, is that that designated green space? Is that that alley that you're referring to?
Well, the alley was a, a portion of what was, was, uh, legal description with track A.
Okay, is that that?
Which separated the two lots and then went behind Lot 1874, between it and the South, Southwestern Bell property.
So what are you planning to do with that green space? I'm sorry, Gary, I'm not finished. What do you, I'm sorry, what are you planning to do with that green space, that designated green space? Are you planning to use that?
You mean the 15-foot wide strip?
The space behind 20702.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Silvera?
This is not a question and answer session, sir. As, as you know, Mr. Chairman, if you want to allow this continuing dialogue between these two persons, you're certainly, certainly within your purview to do so, but it's certainly out of order for a public hearing. We're here to hear the comments. This is not meant for this part of the process, sir.
And I appreciate that. And I think at this point, unless there's someone else that wants to make a comment during this public hearing, they may, I think that some of the, as you say, the questions and answers back and forth really don't fit into this part of the agenda. So is there anyone else that would like to make a comment during the public hearing?
Yes, I'd like to make an additional comment. If you keep threatening that you could build this anyway, then why do you need to take the residential lot and turn it into a C2? Go ahead and build it on just the one that is on C2, which faces Lowman's, but don't take the residential lot and build a convenience store gas station, where the building is completely on the residential lot.
If I could, please, once again, the question and answer, if the, if, if you were to look at the, what was presented by, by the staff, the city of Lago Vista, and the general information, it pretty clearly states what we're dealing with this evening and should answer some of those questions. And the Planning and Zoning Commission will review those comments, and the comments will go into the minutes so that they can be reviewed and determine whether or not this is going to be referred to the city council for consideration. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to make a comment that hasn't already been mentioned during the open public hearing?
I have one question. Karen Todd, I live at 20702, right next door. It sounds to me like this is just a done deal. I don't know that, but if this is going to be built and the retention pond is the main thing on the property that's in question, what kind of a buffer is going to be between my property line and this retention pond? Is there a certain?
I, as I understand it, that that is to be determined in the future. Is that not correct, Roy?
There's a landscaping requirement. It's, it's not shown on the drawing. That is one of the deficiencies we identified.
Correct, and that's.
Is there a minimum, a number of feet? I thought I read something about 25 feet, is that correct?
That back behind the building also includes 25 feet of nothing but grass and a little bit of a sidewalk, but that, that has, that hasn't got anything to do with the, the P2 lot or, or the detention pond.
Thank you, Mr. Jambore.
Yes, I'd like to say something. I've, I've been asking several times, but been overtalked. May I speak?
Uh, you, you have not spoken. I, could you give your name and your address?
Yes, my name is Cindy Durham, and I live at 20803 Northland Drive, Lago Vista. And I just wanted to say, I mean, I have the same feelings as some of the other ones that have spoke, but nobody's brought up the major, my, my, is that the area where they're going to be coming out onto Northland Drive, that seems to be a, a concern to me that, of all of the traffic coming out directly onto Northland Drive. Now, if it was up there where the original zoning is ready for that, I can understand that, but when you, when you take it back, I'm looking at your site plan, you're taking it out to come out on a residential street even further down than Phoenix Auto Repair is. So that, that's a concern that you're going to have all that traffic coming out, because it shows one way in and one way out of, from 1431 and then coming out onto Northland.
I appreciate that, and I think that's already been spoken to and addressed during this.
No, not, not about Northland. Everybody was talking about Lowman's and turning off of Lowman's onto that, but not the people coming out of the driveway onto Northland. And I think that if it's already a convenience store lot, then just build what you have, the room you have, and not try to encroach on the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, appreciate your comments. Newly noted. Is there, is there anyone else that has not yet had an opportunity to speak during the public hearing?
Well, I have another question.
Uh, I believe that's enough.
I'm sorry, why is that, why is that, though? Because people bring up new points and I have another question. So why can't I ask it?
Because the public hearing has been open long enough for residents to make those kind of comments. If you can limit it to just one brief sentence and make it a statement and not a question, that would be appreciated.
Okay. I don't think that this should be voted on until the landscape requirements are clarified. So if it needs to be postponed, that we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gracious.
Oh, Mr. Roberts, you're going to speak during the public hearing?
Yes, sir, and it's going to be very brief and more or less a statement.
Uh, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There appears to be a lot of public opposition to this, and I am, I think it's safe to guess that these people, these, these concerned citizens are going to make their concerns known to city council. To that end, I believe that if more than 20% of the people within the, the 100-foot radius of the, of the area are in opposition, then it's going to trigger a super majority vote at council. I would just encourage that when you table this tonight and leave the public hearing open, that focus, just dot the i's and cross the t's. Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else during the open public hearing? If not, we're closing the public hearing And, open it, Ms. Silvera, let me ask you the question where I had injected my motion at that point in time. Is this the point where I could possibly do that?
Yes, sir. If you, if you want to continue this item to another date, you could at this time. You have closed the public hearing on, that's required for the zoning application. So if you wanted to bring this item back, the, although it all come back as, as one package, the real item for, for discussion would be the other portion of the application, the design review piece of it. Unless you opened the, the hearing and continued it.
I, I guess what I would like to do is to go back and offer my motion once again. And to reiterate, it was to defer the application without continuing the public hearing in order to give the applicant opportunity to address the deficient design review related elements and ordinances and ordinance requirements prior to forwarding a recommendation to the city council. Is that motion in order?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, is there a way to get a second on that? Tom has seconded the motion. Any discussion prior to a vote? Uh, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I, I do not see that requirement as a necessary step. But you're the chairman, that's why you get the big bucks.
I got, I got a raise. I don't know what you got, but. They're always picking on Commissioner Brown and leaving him out, people, you know, kind of reconsider that. Anyway, so that is a motion that has been seconded. If there's no further discussion, can we get a?
Is there a full one for public discussion or no?
I asked if there was any further discussion.
Right.
On the motion.
Correct, is there a full comment?
Public comments are closed, ma'am.
Okay, so I can't comment on the motion?
No.
No man?
No.
Okay, got it, thanks.
So it's moved and seconded. Are there any discussion amongst the commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
I have Tom, Larry, Gary, Mr. Brown. You, you vote no. I guess we don't have Mr. Solomon.
It's three to one.
It, it, it is three to one, so. The motion carries, so the application has been deferred without continuing the public hearing in order to give the applicant opportunity to address the deficient design review related elements and ordinance requirements prior to forwarding a recommendation to the city council, and that's what we'll do. And, Mr. Billings, I certainly appreciate your time.
I have a procedural question here, just before we leave it. So, you know, I voted yes, and I think I still do, but, so, the hearing for the zoning is over, and we'll vote on that issue at the next meeting as well as the design review, correct? So there, there'll be two separate items at that time?
Well, sort of. Here's the reality. The, the design review for the new zoning part is integral to the zoning recommendation. The only part that's not is the part that was C2, which despite the, the comments to the contrary, is basically everything from the, the front of the store to Lowman Ford Road, includes all the driveways, all but one or two parking places, all of that. That's the part that technically doesn't need to be forwarded to city council, but, you know, in reality, how they're going to, how are they going to look at, at design review for half a property? So, you know, the reality, all of this will impact them, even though technically they won't have much to say about the, the, the gas canopy and the driveways.
Okay.
Is that clear enough for you, Tom?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Moving on to item number five. Item number 520-17-29-PDDREZ is the consideration of a recommendation regarding a zoning district change request from TR1, temporary restricted, and PDD Plan Development District to a PDD with design approval to be hereafter known as Nature's Point Plan Development District, a residential resort and wedding venue located at 18504, 18507, 18514, and 18607 Lake Shore Point, approximately 18.039 acres of land in the WB Corewind Survey, abstract numbers 2709 Travis County, Texas, and Lot 130-FS of Marshall's Vista Subdivision. And Roy, if you'd like to take us through the staff presentation?
Well, I will do my best to not confuse you about a big part of the packet that has a little role in, in this application. There is an existing lot that was already in the city, and it was already. Uh, there is an existing lot that was already in the city and it was already part of previous PDDs, uh, although it was not designated for any real use other than it's something called a public utility lot, whatever that is. But it's really that little triangle where the road comes into this property. Uh, other than that, all of this property is in the county and never been annexed and, and was recently annexed, uh, by the city council. There's a development agreement, uh, involved in the thing. Uh, the staff worked very hard off and on with these people and tried to push them as hard as we know how to push them to get the quality up and to be as sensitive as they could to the neighbors. Uh, I think they did a good job with that from, from where they started. Uh, our, our only real comments or deficiencies that we noted has to do with a, a slight amount of, uh, deficiencies in the amount of landscaping that's been provided in those two surface lots, but I don't think what that was intentional. I just think, uh, they got a little bit lost in our landscaping ordinance there at the last minute because they were asking questions right up until the time they had to submit this. But, uh, other than that, they've done everything that we know how to do to make it better.
Uh, thank, thank you, Roy. And, uh, would the applicant like to make their presentation?
Have you seen Laura?
Are you talking about Lori Nordroy?
No, uh, this was Laura Candida Lewis that.
I haven't seen her on here tonight at all.
Yeah, I, and I don't see anybody from the development team, but that I recognize. I'm wondering if they got the date wrong.
Possibly.
Certainly possible. They've, they've attended all the others on every single one.
So is it that they're assuming that, uh, P&amp;Z doesn't count and, uh, they just go to city council?
They've worked on this awful hard. I, I think, I think somebody just made an error in dates. That, that would be my assumption.
I'm trying to call Keith Waters. He's, uh, the developer, or not the developer, but the person backing everything. And I'll see if he comes on. Um, I'm trying to call his mobile.
I tried calling him yesterday. I couldn't get a hold of him.
Yeah, I'm just getting a voice message system.
I know we're kind of in, Mr. Zusky, if you're inclined to open the public comments, I'd feel more comfortable talking other than such as I'm doing right now.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if we're gonna go forward. Not gonna.
I was just gonna recommend you table it in lieu of, in lieu of, uh, without them being here to present.
We, we appreciate that. Uh, I think I'll.
Somebody named Keith. I don't know Keith who.
Keith Walters. He's the owner, the developer.
Is he on? He's, he's muted, but he.
I can't, I can't reach him.
Okay.
You know, many of us, many of us who, who, I, I would appreciate it, because many of us stayed on for the better part of three hours. Um, most of us who are within the 200-foot line, uh, I would say all of us, unless someone's willing to say they don't know anything. All of us have, have for months, uh, dealt with this and looked at it. Um, we are well aware of the plan. My name's Paul Streusaker, and I do think.
Paul, and I do appreciate it, but we have not opened a public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, we're, we're at the point where we need to have a presentation from the applicant. And it appears that the applicant is not available. And if the applicant is not available, uh, I have a very difficult time, uh, trying to go, go forward.
I, I, I don't, I don't disagree. Uh, however, my point to you, Gary, is that those people within the 200-foot line that are the, the people who really have to comment, almost all of us have reviewed these plans for the better part of four months in their evolution. So, so for those of us who are impacted, for those of us who are impacted, I can earnestly say that we've looked at this for quite a long time. And while, um, obviously you can't have the full meeting or a decision, I do think there's a little bit of input that, that people have on what is there and what they well know about.
Um, well, I, I appreciate those comments. And once again, I'm going to refer back to our Director of Development and our city attorney and, uh, uh, really kind of get some counsel as far as, uh, what to do at this point. Uh, I'm very much inclined without having an applicant present to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, their presentation, uh, to table this, uh, until we can meet again. Uh, any comments, uh, Roy or Aaron?
I think you might be required in accordance with recent legislation to take public comments with or without the public hearing because it's an agenda item. I, I think they've decided that for you.
You don't have to take action on it.
Excuse me? Who's?
I'm sorry. I interrupted. I said you don't have to take action on it.
Mr. Chairman, you certainly don't have to open the public hearing on this item. Uh, but because it, item is on the agenda, unless, uh, you, uh, there's some motion to remove this item from the agenda, you don't have, you know, you would need to take public comments, um, on the item itself. You, you would not necessarily have to take up action on it. Um, now, that being said, taking public comments this evening on, on the agenda item is not a substitute for the comments that are submitted during the public hearing. Um, and so essentially you would be, you would have to listen to those same comments or others, um, when the public hearing opens, because the, the comments that are submitted during the public hearing are those that would then be forwarded to the commission. I mean, to get.
I, I, and I guess, uh, you know, to pardon the redundancy, let's just go ahead and, uh, I'll tell you what we'll do. We will go ahead and take some, uh, public comments, but what I would like to do is please ask those who that are going to speak and make comments to make them, uh, uh, brief and to make your point, and please, uh, not be redundant to what someone else has already spoken to. So that's all I ask. So, uh, I guess, Paul, if you, uh, wanted to go ahead, uh, first of all, and, and make your comment, be happy to hear that.
Sure. I really just had a.
Oh, I think he means me, Paul.
Oh, certainly.
Oh.
I'm, I'm in the 200-foot zone, so I, I, I think I'd like to.
I'm in the 210-foot zone.
I got it. Uh, I'd like everybody to go to page, um, what is this page? Page 113 in the, in the presentation. From the zoning committee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, our.
And my, I say this, my comment, my comment is very simple. Um, I'm not opposed to the development, but I will say in, um, in, in the one instance of, uh, and the reason I want to point it out is I would like you guys, in lieu of every comment you've heard here, there's an actual visual picture of what's going on. And I'd like you guys to, to look at it for a second and then understand that the comment I'm about to make is, is very logical and probably needs to be fed back and, and improved upon. Um, you've heard everybody about five feet of roof line, uh, today, but if you go to page 113, you'll notice.
Paul, let me, uh, let me help clarify something. Uh, all the packet that I have does not have a page number on it, number one. Number two.
Zoom through it. They're PDFs. If you read it in the PDF viewer, PDF viewer, page 113.
I'm sorry, but I, I have a hard copy. I don't have anything on my.
Then go to, uh, then go to in this packet.
Paul.
If, if you would. Landscape plan.
If, if you would please, all we want you to do is to make your comment. We don't need to be, uh, looking up something in the document because you'll have an opportunity to do that because this is going to end up being tabled. So you could write to Roy and Roy would forward that to us so that we can consider whatever your concern is at the next, uh, time that this is on the agenda.
Okay. So then to be very complete, to be very complete, if you, if you are to look at the property owners at the boundary edges, uh, inadequate design of the facilities, um, uh, basically create major, it doesn't matter. There's an eight-foot retaining wall. The, uh, structures are, are basically higher than the retaining wall on their, on their first floors, uh, where all the noise will be. They are, they are entertainment facilities. They need to be pointed and further buffering needs to happen with any of the residential lot lines. And it is well within the amount of, uh, land that is available to perform that. Um, and I just think it's a little inadequate and definitely, uh, I don't think any of you, if you were to say, if my house were there, what would I think? I think you'd understand that decks and things shouldn't overlook into private property when the deck could be put on another side. Um, pointing of different buildings could be angled 30, 40 degrees in a different direction, all with the same lake view. Uh, not impinging on the ability to build on this, but, uh, in, ensuring that the privacy of what was once zoned as residential rural lots, uh, now being zoned commercial entertainment lots, whatever that is, um, that you really are looking at for some neighbors, a, a, a very, very, very large impact.
All right. If you, if you would do, uh, the commission a favor and those comments that you've made, once again, if you would please consolidate those and make sure they go to, uh, Mr. Jamboree so that Mr. Jamboree can share those with us when we have the actual, uh, hearing.
Great.
And, uh, who else, uh, was going?
Paul Post. Paul Roberts was next. I see Diane tipped her pen on.
Thank you, Paul, but I'll go ahead and run the meeting now. Uh, Paul Roberts, are you, uh, are you, uh, ready to make your comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. I appreciate it. I'll be brief and, and not redundant. Um, I, Paul, Diane, myself, and Sam Payne Jr., and Sam Payne Sr., and, um, another couple by the name of Just, there's several of us out here on this cove. We are trying to keep, you will recall from previous matters before you, attempting in every way possible to keep the character of the cove consistent. Mr. Walters purchased the property and he's received, in terms of numbers, minimal pushback against it because he has reached out and attempted to work with, with people. Um, however, uh, two of our neighbors, Sam Payne Jr. and Sam Payne Sr., they have concerns. And when my biggest trepidation is being assured of being, being, being told by developer, you know, this is gonna be fine. Everything's gonna be okay. This is what we're gonna do, and it doesn't happen. And I, I've just would just say that, um, anything the city or the commission can do to help ensure that what is agreed upon is gonna be done and we're not gonna see multiple amendments coming down the road. It, it would just be appreciated. You know, we're okay with, for the, the majority of us are okay with what they want to do there as long as that's what they're gonna do and they're not gonna keep changing it and amending it and trying to do something completely different. And I think, uh, Mr. Streusaker did make some good points that, uh, um, there should be some considerations for the neighboring properties out here, um, with respect to looking at their properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another comment that, uh, needed to be made?
Um.
Hello?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, um, there's, there's two people on, uh, is it, uh, Deanne?
Diane?
Yes.
Me? Me? I don't know who the other person is, so I apologize. Oh, uh, uh, the voice conflict. Uh, I was just gonna say that I appreciate the opportunity, but I will, uh, reserve. I'm, I am concerned with that parking lot, like, it looks like right next to my property there. And, uh, I'm concerned about buffers, uh, noise buffers in, on my property. Uh, but I'll reserve for the appropriate time when we have a presentation from the developers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there was, uh, uh, someone, Smith, that was going to try to speak?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm Joan Ellis Smith, and, um, I'm, uh, speaking on behalf of the property owner that's listed as, um, uh, next to this development. It's listed on the plans as 18412, the Sam Payne Sr.'s property. And I do want to make you aware that we are opposed. We're not, this, we believe, continue to believe that this has been a difficult development, uh, on this point. We believe there are residential restrictions and we think we found them. And so we just don't want to hide the ball here that we believe this type of zoning change would be inconsistent with the restrictions on the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there, uh, anyone else? And, uh, so, uh, procedurally, I guess, uh, at this point, uh, Ms. Silbera, we, we would just, uh, make a motion to, uh, table this until the, uh, future meeting.
Yes, sir. Respond to the next meeting, yes.
All right. Then I'll just make a motion that item number 5201729-PDD-RZ be, uh, tabled to a, a future planning and zoning meeting. Is that sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
And, uh, any discussion?
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I, I felt as though, and I still do, that, uh, having access to the property would be beneficial to me to, uh, un-understand, uh, a little bit more than I can see from the drawings. But, uh, that access is blocked.
It is?
Uh, it was my understanding that I was at the right place.
Uh, that, that, that doubled gate. Are you talking about the double gate that's by the, uh, horse barn and miniature horses and?
I didn't see the horses that you're referring to, but I.
The horses, the horses, the horses are dead, but, uh, the gate is, is there.
The horses are not dead. Oh, my gosh. The horses are not dead.
Axel abandoned them all. He was terrible.
Wait, okay, wait a minute.
Found them another home.
I'm following, uh, the instructions of, uh, some programmer who programmed ways to that address, and I came to a, a locked gate across the road. And, uh, I thought I had arrived at the property and, but could not enter. Maybe Mr. Roberts has an answer for me. I, maybe I was at the wrong.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you very much. Um, two things, Mr. Brown. I don't have an explicit answer on how you can gain access to that property other than I would be hap, myself or Paul or Diane, um, would be happy to give you Keith Walters' phone number. I'm sure he would be happy to give you direct access to his property. Um, additionally, from where I'm at and from my home, I look right at that. I have an excellent vantage point of everything there, including Diane's property, who just expressed her resident concerns about the parking lot. You can access my, I, I would be delighted to have you here. You can see the whole point from here. And then you can also, I'm, I'm, I'm confident I can speak freely for Deanne, Diane, when I say that, um, you can view the parking lot, and if she's not there, I'll give you the gate code. And, uh.
You can walk to the outside of the property. What I would caution. The property, what I would caution anyone is that a huge amount of teardown of the existing structures, everything has happened. And I've been on the property, I have the right to go on the property, Mr. Walters has allowed me to have it. But but there is, you know, metal shards, all kinds of things that can impale your feet, so I really don't recommend if unless you've got work boots on that you trape surround. But, you know, you can look at all the boundaries and everything that are there.
And isn't and isn't that not through the double fence, it's got like a cable around it, but you can go through that double?
There's a side gate that opens up 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 towards the road that you can just walk in.
Yeah, and you can see where the old venue was demolished, correct?
We're not talking about that point anymore, we're talking the horse farm at the very at the very end of the road. There's nothing going on at that chain link fence at the end, what was once nature's point. Some some further future development will happen. Okay, we are talking about the formal Maribella Farms Horse Farm. Sixteen acres, that is it, that is at the road, and the and the only thing you see chained up is he that that whole property was fenced. So the the fencing that's always been there is just locked up for for the safety of anyone to go on, there's been deconstruction and you could get hurt.
Just so so I'm clear, there there is a double gate that has a cable around it, but it opens about six feet. If somebody wants to walk through it to be.
Also a door at the very end of that, which is just a latched little door.
Yeah. So back to you, Mr. Brown, I believe that it's pretty pretty easy to get in there and poke around. I just make sure, watch out for the rattlesnakes. Go ahead.
If I could also add that if you just walk, if you continue on down Lake Shore Point to the end of that that the sections that we're talking about here, to the end of that section, you're going to come where the Sam Payne's property is. And they, as Ms. Smith addressed, and Paul Strewsaker addressed, you can clearly see, and I'm sure Mr. Mr. Payne, Sam Payne will give you permission to to walk down his property line, line which there's no fence there. And you can have a perspective of the four story building looking over his house, even though it's fifty feet away from the the line. I mean, that's a very clear perspective that you can get without going through any gate or any deconstruction.
It's funny, we've been talking about six foot height of a building. And here we are looking at four stories, so here's the thing, they're they're just.
I think at this point, we have reached, we have come to an understanding that we're going to rehear this, we have a motion that was presented. It's been seconded, we've asked for discussion, we is discussion amongst the commission. And the motion is to table this until the next meeting. And at this point, we need to have a vote unless one of the commissioners needs to make another comment. If the commissioners do not need to make any further comments, then we will ask for a vote on the motion to table. All in favor? We have Tom and Richard, Larry and myself, that's four. And it's been tabled until a future Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, thank you.
So just one clarifying question, is somebody going to reach out to one of us? Richard, for example, are you, do you intend, do you need to make arrangements with any one of us to come out? And that invitation's open to all commissioners, certainly.
I tromped around there an awful lot.
Maybe I just got lost. I was, I know I was on Lake Shore Drive and maybe maybe I just got lost and I'll try again.
Richard, if you need to, I could I can take you out there. You get on the back, you get on the back of my motorbike.
I don't think your Jeep could handle it, and so we'd have to take my truck.
I don't have a Jeep.
I have four wheelers and dirt bikes, you guys would look good on dirt bikes.
No, I don't, I don't think so, all right.
Really don't think it's gonna help, it's gonna be two feet.
I'll I'll get it figured out, that, thank you all for your concern, it was apparently my error.
If we could please, we've had a prior to moving to item number six, we've had a request for a seven minute break. And we will reconvene at ten eighteen.
Aaron, since we're in recess, I'll tell you, I think you're you probably recognize that I bit my tongue on the Buffalo Trail matter. I know you saw that item. My tongue still hurts, actually.
Ouch.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just turned out, what about Buffalo chips, what what was that?
Buffalo wing, wings.
Buffalo weed? Ooh.
How many minutes?
It's now ten eighteen that we're about to resume this fun fest of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If we could, we're going to move on to item number six. Item number six, discussion and consideration of a recommendation regarding a potential amendment to section six point one zero of chapter fourteen of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances related to accessory buildings in a single or two story or two family zoning district. And Roy, if you would like to take us through that.
Yeah, what I'm looking for, you know, Tom did a draft that was primarily focused on the height, which is where we started. Last week, we talked about maybe we need to to clarify what our intent is about the aesthetics and what our what our purposes are. There was also the suggestion that if they exceed a the designated height that we determined that maybe they need to go through the same special exception approval rather than a conditional use approval. You know, I'm looking for a little direction so that I can embellish Mr. Monahan's work. But that's what I'd really like to hear you guys do is discuss, you know, what you think is good, bad, or otherwise about the ordinance as it is, or the or the draft that, you know, addresses the height.
Thanks, Roy.
Yeah, and specifically in that, this is the one thing, you know, whether you want to make it a special exception or whether you think there's advantage in the one stop shop that exists now, that's the 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 real divergence, if you will. And there you can certainly make cases for the height being something that needs to be viewed in terms of a ridge pole rather than you know, just hope that it's right, but that's the method they have now is to make it convenient so that the approvals all happen at once. Fortunately, they've been slight, but if they weren't, you know.
Roy, you mentioned, no, we talked on the phone a week or so ago about this. And you know, the draft right now just says you're subject to, throws you over eleven sixty basically in its entirety. But you talked maybe about eliminating provisions where it has to be erect until till it's resolved or something, right, so that they didn't have to keep that ridge pole up for an indefinite amount of time or something like that.
Right, well, and or treat the height independent or in advance, if you will. You know, of the conditional use permit so that it could go down and they could, you know, simply be informed that planning and zoning is dealt with the height issue, and there's no, there's no view impact that that you're worried about.
Yeah, but I want to, I'd like to see the ridge pole.
Yeah, I understand, and and certainly if the height is, you know, marginal, okay, maybe it's not necessary, but if it's significant, it could easily be necessary. Now, and I'll give you an example, we had one that was so significant, you guys made them reduce it.
Right?
You know, and and it did, you know, when it's built, it probably won't look much like the house anymore. And but and that was, you you guys did that to to get the height down. So I I see certainly merits. You know, you might want to do it a two tiered approach, you know, I don't know, but you know, within a certain range, you don't have to do it. But if it's above this, you do, you know, you guys just talk and it, and hopefully I'll know what to do after you get through talking, that's what I'm hoping will happen.
Richard, I saw that you wanted to jump in there.
It with regard to height, it seems to me that's a two way street. With the traditional height issue related to a special exception impacting views of the neighbors. I think because of the materials that get used in a lot of these accessory buildings that we should also consider whether the height makes it unsightly for the neighbors to have to look at the side of a two story tall metal barn. And so I would like to not use the special exception process because it's a a one way street kind of thing where it, we only talk with that with regard to the impact on views from the neighbors. And does it? Does it impact my view of something beyond it? Well, maybe or maybe not, but what if it impacts my view of having to look at the damn thing? And so I would, I would like to introduce that to the to the concept. Is, I don't know, as as, I don't even know if that's about height, it may be, often it is, though, often it is about height.
Well, keep in mind, the reason for suggesting eleven sixty is you know, right now, I think the height requirement is simply can't be any taller than the existing house. And if you're given, if it's a two story house, it's been given height exception, now it's even awfully tall. Tall building, which, I don't know, maybe there's a architectural context issue, you could argue there or something, it's in eleven sixty.
I thought I thought that we just approved a two story metal building on Green Park Drive that is taller than the primary residence. Maybe I, maybe I missed that, but I think it's for, let me see, I have to go back and look at it now, I'm rusty on the rule, but.
We had talked about changing it, though, already, you know, to before it was no taller than the house. We had talked about changing it though already, you know, to, before it was no taller than the house in one place and then no taller than eighteen feet above adjacent grade in another.
But the loophole was the conditional use permit. There was, you could ask for a height exception, if you went for a conditional use permit, you'd get a height exception request and, but there was no controls on that like there is for the height exception for a house.
Right, the consideration had nothing to do with view preservation, had more to do with aesthetics only. Now, having said that, you can say, well, it can't be any taller than what a house could be on this lot without regard to whether it has a special exception, i.e. it's got to meet the zoning ordinance limitation in table A. You know, there are all kinds of ways you can go and I'm, I'm not trying to tell you which one. I'm just trying to get you to discuss it and see if their consensus results.
Let me, let me, if I could do this. We've had this staff presentation and there's a lot of questions of the staff. And I know Mr. Roberts wants to make some comments, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to open the public hearing at ten twenty-six. And we'll certainly have time after I close the public hearing for further discussion amongst the commission members. So, Mr. Roberts, the public hearing's open.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if, if, if acceptable to the chair and anybody would like to engage in, in answering me directly and, and have an open discussion, I, I would welcome that. I have a couple of questions. One would be, just be a technical question and it's, it's not rhetorical, I just don't know the answer. And the, the question is this, when my understanding, and it might be wrong, is that coming up with what, what, with the work product that Tom has put time into to produce, shouldn't, aren't these, I mean, this, the question, aren't work products like this and ideas like this supposed to be at the explicit direction of the council? And that's just a technical formality question, it's not, Aaron shaking her head, no. Okay, thank you for answering that question, I didn't know, I thought I read something like that. The other question.
I, I guess my, my take on that as well is that, you know, it is the Planning and Zoning Commission. And once again, falls into the preview, I think, of planning. If, if I'm incorrect, address that, but I think.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
That's how these things come into play. We'll, we're trying to deal with something within our zoning and come to find out, we discover something that we have to come up with a different plan. And I think that's a lot of this.
Was, and I'm just trying to avoid an issue down the road, that's why I was asking, thank you for clarifying, I'm still learning. One thing, in listening to y'all discuss this so far, you know, there was a, I forget the street, but it was recently with the, the lot that, I think he had two or three lots and he was trying to build that accessory building. And I think one of the recommendations was that he was acquiescent to was to add a primary door on the street front inside of it at the request, I think, of, of Commissioner Monahan, if I'm not mistaken. This was a month or two ago and it was heard at council. And one of the things that that conversation involved, involved into at council was maids quarters, mother-in-law suites, living quarters. And there was a question of, you know, is this allowed, is it okay, what's the minimum square footage? And especially with what's going on in the changing demographics, not demographics, but COVID being the catalyst, there's so many people moving to the ex-burbs like we are where they want these accessory buildings, they want to turn them into offices. And some people want to build them into, again, mother-in-law suites and the like. Is anything Commissioner Monahan is proposing, would that inhibit a homeowner from wanting to convert that into living quarters for family? And if so, you know, I think the city ordinances currently allow for family to live on the additional property on a single-family residence, but you know, what about when it becomes the cousin, the second cousin, the in-laws? Things like that. How, how far into the minutia does planning and zoning have to, have to go to circumvent issues arising from any work product that you arrive at? Those are just, I guess, kind of open-ended questions that I think should be part of the conversation if deemed applicable. So I just wanted to throw that out there in case I have it crossing by his mind.
I think we're just looking at, um, putting some parameters around the construction of the accessory building, not any potential use afterwards, I think. They wanted to take a storage room and not, and all of a sudden they want to make a quarters for the mother-in-law. You know, I guess, uh, right, I mean, that'd be, that'd be a permit process?
Well, I mean, you can attempt to regulate that use, you know, it gets a little dicey.
I mean, I'm not suggesting it, I don't, you know, I'm not trying to do that.
You know, some jurisdictions have, uh, you know, the mother-in-law quarters, garage apartments, that's a very old idea that went out of vogue and it's come back. I, I think the modern view is there's no reason to regulate that use. So long as you don't allow it to be independently rented, which is what our ordinances and policies require. That's, that's not going to be something that, if you're going to rent it to somebody, you better know them well enough because it's going to be, you know, utilities included.
So if I could use myself as an example for possibilities that could be forthcoming with other property owners in Lago Vista. And if any of y'all have driven, y'all may have driven down my street in the past. I have a, my primary home and then I have a port-a-cachet connecting to a twelve-hundred-square-foot building, which is effectively a three-car garage, which is my warehouse space. And then I've got about four hundred square feet of office space that is actually built out as a mother-in-law suite, it's got everything in it but a washer and dryer. People might want to do that. Next to my pool, I'm building a seven-hundred-square-foot accessory building, but I'm future-proofing it by putting in two hundred, I'm putting in a two-forty with a sixty-amp circuit. I've got hot water, cold water going to it. I'm doing everything I can so that if ever I sell or one of my, I need to turn it into like a little apartment for family or something, that's an option. Is anything you're proposing today, would there be a problem with somebody wanting to do what I have effectively done and trying to future-proof for?
I don't think it even addresses the subject.
Right, now, I mean, I, I think everybody's happy with the way it is now, which allows that. And that nobody's talked about changing it. I think the idea that we were talking about was, you know, what was originally just a discussion about height? Not was to start regulating uses, but start talking about other aspects of the appearance. And maybe give criteria.
I, I think, you know, what Richard said, you know, it, it just doesn't fit, it's big and ugly. And somehow that, you know, it doesn't get out of hand and it has to come before P and Z.
Right. Well, and, and that's my point, and you've heard, you guys heard me make it before. Maybe you write an intent section and, and obviously we'll try and not be quite this crude and simple, but we'll say, don't do big and ugly, that's our intent.
But consider too with intent that with so many people, Roy, you may have seen some of the charts I've shared with you recently, I haven't shared with P and Z, coming from my market research, paid market research services, talking about the Exodus of Cities, the home-based businesses, you know, people starting their own businesses is just, it's going nuts. It's, people are just turning into entrepreneurs, they need warehouse space. I could foresee people building accessory buildings and running their home-based businesses out of those businesses, using them for warehouse space, et cetera. And is, is that a consideration that would have to be addressed in what Commissioner?
Typically addressed in the limitations of a home-based business is where that's addressed. Not, the idea is, is you can't put a, an accessory building of, I mean, you can't put a home-based business in an accessory building at all typically.
Okay, and then last.
Did you, did you want to make a comment there, Tom? No, oh, okay, go ahead, Paul.
Last question would be, I believe my understanding is correct, please correct me if I'm wrong, that this is, this gets into the exception, not variance aspect of things, correct? So if somebody's wanting to build this, one of these buildings that's taller than what your revised ordinance would propose, it would be an exception, not a variance. In other words, they wouldn't have to prove some type of hardship in order to get the okay, correct?
You're correct, it is not, it's not a variance standard.
Okay, I've only recently kind of gotten up to the problem, the exceptions versus variances thing. Got it, thank you.
But it, once again, it would, it would make the approval process much more, much more coherent if we included the expectations in the ordinance.
And, but those, but I think what's important is to make sure that those expectations that we really think several chess moves ahead to ensure that we're not opening Pandora's box.
Yep, I agree wholeheartedly, and that's.
Mention those things that are not, are not permitted by this in, in the ordinance, just so people can't claim ignorance and, oh, well, gee, you should have told me before I spent all that money because what I wanted was a home-based business operating out of it.
I, I would implore the commission to consider being amenable to home-based businesses. That's good growth, honestly, I think, for Lago Vista. And when I say home-based business, I don't mean like a retail storefront where retail customers are coming. But I mean, just, you know, they're running a business, they're running it, they're doing accounting work, consulting work, or someone like me who simply has a UPS and a daily UPS and FedEx pickup. You know, there needs to be limitations on it.
We've covered that in all field, but we can talk about home-based businesses and what makes them work and what makes them not work. But they're, they're basically an exception to zoning that you want to limit. And, but they're great as incubators, the goal is, let's grow businesses. And when they get big enough to support themselves, they go find a commercial location. That's kind of the theory behind it.
Uh, Tom, if we could get back to you and.
Thank you.
To be able to, any, anything that you see so far in the documents that have been presented and.
Well, I mean, I, I just tried to give a, you know, at the time when this came up, you know, we were getting a number of conditional use permit requests for, or we got some anyway that, uh, you know, they're a height, you know, a height exception was being requested. So it seemed to me it just looked like a loophole that, you know, you can build an accessory building without the same level of review. I mean, if you want to go above the height that's allowed, there's a, you know, you're not going through the same rigors of review. So the paragraph there where I hunted to section eleven sixty, you know, kind of put those, um, conditions in place. But I'm also amenable to, maybe rather than just saying eleven sixty as a whole, cherry-picking, you know, what exactly out of there do we want to apply? I mean, it's not the same as a house necessarily, so, you know, there may be, we don't want to adopt all of it. Just, you know, maybe just put up a ridge pole and that's it, you know, so we can look at it without some of the other things.
And like I said, if you guys want to try and approach and, and, and I bring it back to you and you don't like it, you know, we can always try again. But, you know, if you'll just give me a direction to start with, I'll, I'll tune it up and add the, don't do big and ugly part to it.
I, I would like to, I'm, I am concerned about accessory buildings that are built in such a way that they become a, a livable building, totally habitable building. Tom's mentioning about, you know, there have been a lot of people who have built a small house and lived in it until they can afford the big house. And then they build the big house on, on that same property. And if we don't have anything in place to stop that, then they'll just come tell us they want to build an accessory building. And, and that'll actually be their, their primary residence. Or in, in the case of my Uncle Paul, who's building the nice accommodation where I plan to stay next summer, next to his pool. I, I just feel as though, since the, the distance by which we can measure relationships should not be a part of our ordinance. The part of our ordinance that we can control is how did the thing get built? What, was it built as a, as living quarters or, uh, or was it just an office? Was it just a, a place from which you can operate a business, from which you can perform certain functions? But it seems to me surely some control by us will be lost if the accessory building can be built as a fully functional residence and all we can control is the height.
Oh, yeah, Robert's comment, Mr. Roberts, you can go ahead and comment before I close the public hearing.
I, I agree with Commissioner Brown's ideas. He's, he's clearly trying to make sure that people aren't taking advantage of the ordinance. And, you know, perhaps a way of addressing that is to, you know, stipulate that, you know, you've got the property and then they come in, they start with their accessory building before their primary res- residence. Well, okay, sure, if you want to do that, but you can't live there. You're not going to get an occupancy certificate and you can't reside there, you can build it. You know, we can't dictate to them what, in the order of construction. But certainly we can dictate whether or not they can reside in that, right? Is that, is that?
I don't think you can build an accessory building on an empty lot, it has to be with a primary.
That's true, that's true, that you, you can't be the first building, you're right about that, Tom.
Yeah.
But if you have an expansive lot or if you consolidate two lots, now, now you obviously have enough room to build another building that could be a house. And I, I don't see how we can say, okay, we told you, you can build the building, but we won't give you a C.O. We've already told you, you can build a building that can be occupied by humans. So we can't now say, oh, you can't actually have a certificate of occupancy. You'll have to just, just go over there once in a while.
So can, so can a homeowner on a three-acre lot have a guest house?
Well, there you go, can he?
I, I don't see any reason why the city should restrict that.
Sure, absolutely, you should, you should not. But, uh, what if it's, becomes that person's residence? As I hope to use your pool house, I, I actually thought I would move in and at least for the summer, if not longer.
Well, I just got the concrete poured today, by the way, I'm, I'm working on it for you, but.
You've got until summer to have it ready, but.
But I think, I think at this point, we need to. I think, I think at this point, we need to kind of regain focus on the subject at hand. And, Tom, if, you know, I'd, I'd appreciate your, your comments on what we have in front of us right now, and also, you know, any other commission members as far as the draft and.
Well, I think all that's in front of you right now deals with strictly with the height issue. And so to me, if, if you want to move that along, or.
Right.
Or try to give something to Roy to maybe massage it some more.
Right, just a, just an approach about the height.
I, I like the idea of the ridge pole, quite honestly, if it's going to be beyond a certain point. Just to get that visual.
Let me do that and write an intent section, and if y'all want to go further than that, we can talk about it next month, when, when I bring you the draft. How's that?
Okay, I, I'd like to say, do we limit ourselves in how we write this ordinance, what it will say? If we start out by calling it accessory building, then, then we seem to be only concerning ourselves with if the intent of the person is to build an accessory building, just, just a little barn, just a little workplace.
Well. The section of rules is the accessory building rule, so.
Intent is to build a, a second residence, and you.
Second building, actually.
Pardon?
It, it's really any second building. It, you know, what, anything that follows a primary residence. It can be completely, under our current ordinance, it can be completely residential, no storage required.
Okay, do, do we want that many holes to be in our ordinance that all we can regulate it for is height?
Height looks size is what we're talking about, but if you want to limit and say it cannot be completely secondary residential use alone, we can write that if you want to go there.
I, I don't want to go there, I think, you know, the accessory building just is basically doing with what you're, what's required for the square footage of the building, it limits the square footage. It, it tells you whether or not you have to get a permit or not based on the size. If you want to do something different that's not in there, you can go get a conditional use permit. In other areas of the ordinances, we have sections about what type of businesses you can have, and you got to get special use permits or, or conditional use permits that, like we did in the spring, but those are different sections. So here is just the outline, what we're talking about is nothing but, but the, the different types of accessory buildings based on size, and there's some provisions in there that dictate what the height's going to be. And, you know, it had come up from a couple of things that come up over the last few months to, you know, the section I wrote bringing in 1160 was merely to give a little higher level of review for the height exception. Because the possibility is, a house that we gave a height exception to to build two stories was granted, and, but maybe he's got a half acre next to it, and he, and it's consolidating, he wants to build an accessory building. Would he want a two-story accessory building? And maybe that over there, two acres, that blocks the view from somebody, but the house doesn't, so, so it just seemed like, you know, any buildings that approach those types of heights, that's going to potentially block somebody's view ought to be, have a little bit more scrutiny to it. I'm so.
I, I definitely agree with what you just said.
So that's, that's all this section is, is dealing with the, the size and height of accessory buildings and whether or not you have to get a permit, or whether that permit is, and if it's conditional use, it has to come before us.
And that's where, that's where, that's exactly where we started. And, and then last month, we talked about maybe I ought to put an intent section there so that people will understand that, you know, the, the size and all of that really has to do with the appearance, and, you know, what it looks.
Good thing, you know, if you like a little preamble at the beginning or something.
Right. That, that's all I was trying to do is make sure that, you know, we, we've defined my, my task, if you will, or my marching orders.
I mean, I'm good with writing a little preamble to it.
We would put something in the front that say, this is the accessory building ordinance, and this is what accessory buildings are, and this is what this ordinance is for.
And this is what, this is what we expect you to do if you're going to get approved.
It's the intent, it gives the intent.
I like that, I like that, okay.
I'm, I'm just about to close the public hearing, so if you want to speak up, Mr. Roberts.
Thanks. Yeah, of course, a quick one. Because haven't, so what happens if, what are the thoughts of the commission where the, the stipulations are in contrast with an HOA and the homeowners association? I say that because remember, as Lago Vista grows and some of these tracts of land around here get developed, these PDDs end up having their own HOAs, they might allow or restrict something that is different from what the city ordinance is.
I think I would ask Ms. Silvera, we've been through this a number of times.
I, to clarify, I don't mean which one has, has, you know, governance or precedence, but what do we want? Not which one has it, what do we want? Do we want our rules to supersede the HOA rules? Or do we want to be respectful of what that homeowners association wants for their neighborhood?
The most restrictive rules apply as far as, if you're, if from the homeowner's perspective, they need to look at what the most restrictive rules apply. Now, the city's not going to.
So if that.
You know.
We're not going to enforce them, basically.
Yeah.
So what if the HOA rules are more restrict, are, are, if the city's rules are more, so the HOA rules are more restrictive, they would apply.
So Paul, a common, a common issue that we, or common argument that we've dealt with with height exceptions has been that, you know, we're, we're conflicting with deed restrictions for height by granting height exceptions. We do not, we are not responsible for deed restrictions. That's, but if someone's asking for a height exception from the city and they get it, but the deed restriction doesn't allow a higher height, then it's between the homeowners.
Person.
Correct.
The HOA or the, would have to fall suit.
The documents explain it, we neither waive nor enforce.
We'll, we'll close the public hearing at 10:53, and we're in our discussion mode, and it would sound to me like we're going to ask Roy to put a preamble, put it up front, and take a good look at this at our next meeting in January.
I will have you a finished draft, or what might be a finished draft.
Do you, Tom, do you think you want to leave it, that the height of the building will be measured from the ground under it as opposed to?
Well, the 11, I, I think I have in the draft that it's measured from the highest point on the lot to be consistent with the house.
Yep, that, that's the way I have my last version.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
My computer that I had that open on has died because someone at our meeting was too long-winded for me to.
That's why, that's why you should get the paper part of it, Richard, and.
Then I could have, 113, were these, couldn't I?
I suppose. So do we, I guess the question is, do we need to make a motion for deferral, Counselor? Or do we just make, make a motion on the?
We'll just continue the public hearing.
Continue the hearing, and we'll bring it back.
Right, we'll bring, we'll bring you back, you know, finished looking.
So do, we do need to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
And reopen the hearing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we'll, now we have to re, a motion to reopen the hearing, is that correct?
It could all be at one time.
Yeah, just make a motion to reopen the potential amendment, section 6.10 of chapter 14, Lago Vista Code of Ordinances, related to accessory building, single or two-story, two-family zoning district, and that should suffice?
Yes, sir, and we'll continue it to the next council meeting.
And continue to the next council meeting.
Nina, Commissioner.
Is there someone like to second that?
Sir.
Seconded by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have.
Mr. Hagler, are you voting?
I. I see there's three, three of us.
Mr. Hagler, are you voting?
His mic's on.
Larry.
Well, we might, we might have missed him, but we have three in favor, and that's a quorum.
Um.
Four is a quorum.
Right.
Three makes it pass.
Right, it's a majority, that's what you need.
Oh, oh, are we counting Larry is, is in attendance but not voting?
In spirit.
So we, we had three out of four, so.
Okay.
His, his light's on, and he.
Lights on, but nobody's home.
And nobody's home. Well, with, with that, I would certainly, after all your patience, David, and I'd like to welcome you again, and any comments from our city council liaison?
No, I just, thank you very much for bringing whatever you're going to bring to city council when you bring it, but I know you're going to bring some issues we'll have to deal with, but thank you for spending the time, and I'm glad you're having long meetings like we're having long meetings, so.
Didn't send you anything tonight.
Is that a get-even attitude?
That's right, you know, the longer my meeting goes, your meetings are going to go.
The. Just another long meeting. Well, I think we set ourselves up for a long meeting on Monday because we, I mean, in January, because we continued everything that we heard tonight till January, and so.
We did not continue everything.
Oh, you're right, we, the country club. But we have to count on Roy to not bring us any new business in the coming month.
I have one, I'm sorry.
Hold back the tide, Roy.
I, I, you will have one angry amendment from me, basically telling, telling people that nothing that in chapter three can supersede the zoning ordinance or something to that effect. I've already advertised it, there's been some confusion in that regard that we need to clean up.
Nothing in chapter three can supersede what ordinance?
Uh, setbacks mainly, there's some, and we can have exceptions, but we need to define them. In chapter three, they're not defined, they're, they're not in 14 at all. So you'll see it when it comes, but they'll, they'll, they'll be a, a minor amendment in, in section 5.4, I believe it is.
Something to look forward to.
Yes, sir.
Well, you're talking about contradictions, right, between chapter three? You're talking about the contradictions raised recently at Board of Adjustments.
And some people would argue aren't contradictions, but.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll make it clear what, what counts.
And unless you have anything else, David, we'll move on.
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas, because I won't see you to the new year, and come back with a new attitude in the new year. A refreshed attitude, revitalized.
Well, I'll have a new attitude after I get vaccinated.
Okay, all right, be safe out there.
The consent agenda, thank you, David, consent agenda that all matters listed in the consent agenda are to be considered routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The item eight on the, to consider the following minutes of August 13th, 2020, and September 10th, 2020, and I'm sure everyone is just absolutely pored over those minutes.
You, you only have the one, so I think you might have to actually remove it from the consent agenda so you can approve the one. We, we did not get the second set.
Well, be darned, well, they were so long for August.
Yes, they were.
My God.
I, I'm so confused, I can't remember what minutes we have and which ones we don't.
Well, I, I know we had July because they got sent out there, and they were already approved, so it's for the August 13th, 2020, regular meeting agenda, minutes. Any corrections to those?
When Trump was still president, oh, okay, I remember those days.
So, I'll, a motion to approve the minutes. Tom makes the motion.
Make the motion that we approve the minutes of August 13.
And it's seconded by Richard, and any further discussion, there's none, all in favor, aye. So that's a total of three commissioners out of four have voted to approve the minutes. And as far as future agenda items, we've done certainly enough to make future agenda items.
I have a discussion of one, potentially. Roy, you know, I know with a couple of guys at Board of Adjustments, and one of their favorite, favorite topics to deal with these days is the height of the fence. And so there's, a lot of people are coming in for variances to get an eight-foot fence instead of six, and the question they're asked is, why can't we change the ordinance to eight feet from six? Because they don't, these guys on the Board of Adjustments, at least that I know, they don't know. So I don't know if that's something we want to consider or not, or if there's a reason for the six-foot height that I'm not aware of.
I'll go a little further than that, sir. It was on the, remember the subcommittee work list, included not just the height, but everything about the fence ordinance probably needs some work. It's, it's nothing to write home about with its quality.
Okay, but is there a reason for, is, do, do you have any background as to why it's limited?
I'll tell you what other ordinances typically do. They typically allow you to use an eight-foot fence in any location that can't be seen from a public right of way. That, that's a common, you know, allowance. That doesn't mean it's the right one, but that appears in many ordinances, you know.
If you live on the golf course, then it's even different.
Right, right.
What, what was that stipulation that, about the eight-foot fence, please?
It couldn't be seen from a public right of way, i.e. the front of the house, or on a corner lot, or any location like that.
Can, can I say something on that?
Sure.
Thanks, I, I've been going to the Board of Adjustments and the Building and Standard Meetings as well, and, I mean, Roy can fill in the gaps in, in my memory here, but with the, with respect to the height of the fences, what, what's come up recently is people were building what should have been engineered walls, but they weren't engineers, they were effectively three feet high, four feet high, and they looked nice, and none of the neighbors were objecting to them, but, you know, they're, they're building, they're building the wall, right, on this terraced landscape, on, on these inclines, and then they're building that six-foot fence on top of it, but it exceeds the height limit. Would, would you agree with that summation, or if not, can you clarify?
They're beyond fences, but, you know, but, yeah, and, and there are other issues there, and everybody says, nobody. Uh, and everybody says, nobody had an objection to it, but actually that was the result of a complaint. So somebody had. Yeah.
That's why, that's how it ended up before there. I didn't, I didn't realize that. But you know, and they were also talking about, well, you know, we've got this undue hardship because there's a sexual predator in the area. But they're really like three lots away kind of thing.
Yeah, and this may be time for Aaron to chime in. But perhaps the more relevant, uh, topic that, that, you know, related to what Tom brought up is, you know, to take a look at the, uh, standard for variances that we have could use some work. And we talked about getting you guys together with Board of Adjustments at almost a year and a half ago, maybe. And COVID happened and people got busy and it didn't happen. Uh, we need to do that eventually.
They were petitioning for that. They were advocating for.
Well, actually, it was Aaron and I that started. It was about two years ago.
Well, y'all started that, but at the most recent Board of Adjustment meeting, they were talking about trying to get together with P N Z.
Right.
On some of this stuff.
We brought it on, it never happened.
Conflicts.
It was going to be a joint meeting once upon a time.
Well, we're going to have a subcommittee meeting, but then we were told P and Z.
Right.
You have subcommittee meetings without them being a public meeting.
Right. All, all kinds of things like that.
Anything to add to that, Aaron?
There, there certainly is a great need to have you guys meet, uh, have a joint meeting with the Board of Adjustments at some point in the near future. I'd really like to also do a training, um, and, and really more for the Board of Adjustments. But I think it's really critical that y'all hear what issues are happening, um, with the board. Uh, and their issues and concerns, the, the, you know, we touched on a couple tonight. The fence issue, uh, the fence ordinance in total, the strictness of our, um, variance, uh, requirements. And, and you guys are the body that would consider the changes or putting forth an, uh, ordinance amending those things that the council could consider changing it. Um, that, there've been some very interesting, um, conversations at B O A and, and decisions and, and some thought processes that I think, uh, as a combined group, um, y'all need to come together on. And so I'm hoping either in January, uh, or early February, we can try to schedule, uh, a joint meeting. Uh, when, once, you know, we'll have all the new members on there. So it'll be a good time for, uh, a training refresher for those who might need it. And then, um, an opportunity for y'all to kind of work together on, uh, potential amendments that need to happen. That'll benefit both of you, um, but, both, uh, groups.
Yeah, and, and, you know, in an ideal world, and maybe this is just my viewpoint of it. You know, the, the, the point would be for you to hear their concerns and then you guys to react to them.
Yep.
Appropriately, you know? However, you think that is.
Well, not just concerns, but they might have some recommendations too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, what, however, whatever they want to leave you with, you know, and then you go hide in the corner and come out with something that fixes it.
Well, it'd be nice, uh, that we could, if we could do that and not have to do it virtual. But I don't, I don't see that happening for.
Yeah, virtual.
Long time down the road.
Yeah, we, we talked about, you know, maybe setting up some places where we could at least be in the same room and, you know, spread out and all that, but we'll see. I think council's about to try something like that. We'll, we'll.
We could go to K Oaks.
What, the campground?
No, K Oaks.
The, the campground would work fine. We could spread out and maybe just have a P A system and build a fire and.
We could have a golf tournament.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Hey, just so you know.
The marshal.
They're talking about March is probably, there's, uh, um, down in, uh, Dripping Springs, they're doing a, we were talking about this at Lions Club the other night and, uh, Lions, Lions Club down in Dripping Springs, they're, they're planning a March, um, uh, golf tournament fundraiser. And, um, some of the talk I'm seeing in, in my market feeds is that they're thinking that some of these restrictions, and this is just speculation at this point, but some of these restrictions could start lifting a little bit in the March timeframe. So you never know.
Let's see. So, uh, is there any, uh, uh, future agenda items beyond what we've discussed so far and what we've, uh, kind of moved from this month to next month? I guess not. If that's the case, then it is, uh, 11:11 and we are adjourned.
I was hoping for a midnight.
Have a good one.
Yeah, cut it, cut it short.
Merry Christmas.
Send you.
Merry Christmas, God bless everyone.
See you next year.